Call them being in order for the October 10, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. I need questions on consent calendar. Moving on to staff, item two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get started, I want to introduce a guest that we have today, Mark Young. He is a principal at CANON. They are one of the nation's largest financial advisory firm, currently ranked number five by Reuters. They provide advice to both large and small cities, including the cities of Los Angeles, Long Beach, Oakland, San Diego, Santa Barbara, Mission Viejo, Manhattan Beach, and many more. He has specifically not participated in any of the city's prior financings, and he is here as a resource to both you and to us as staff. Before we brought Mark- And others. And, as you know, our net pension obligation dwarfs any of the numbers that you see on the screen. But within the structured debt issuances, you see a division between-
Sitting out there, but if, just hypothetically, if we were to prepay-
Refinance.
Or refinance, that number, would that number be a lot higher because we wouldn't be receiving the BAB subsidy upon either refinancing or prepayment?
Well, it would be higher for two reasons. One, there would be a premium on repaying. And last time we checked, Mark did a more recent conversation, but the first time it was probably a buck fifty on every dollar that we would repay. And then, of course, you're right, we wouldn't receive the BAB subsidy, but maybe we'd have a lower interest rate.
Okay. Good enough. Mr. Mayor?
Could you explain for the viewers and those in attendance what BAB subsidy is?
So, during the Obama administration and at the start of the economic crisis, markets were in flux, everybody was panicking, and the tax-exempt market was becoming dysfunctional. In fact, deals weren't getting done. So, the Obama administration said, okay, we'll provide you access to the taxable market, but to make you whole, since you're used to issuing, having the benefit of a tax-exempt bond issue, we'll provide you a 35% interest subsidy, in a sense, getting us back down to the interest rates that we would normally enjoy in the non-taxable market. Is that helpful?
Sure it does. Councilman Piar.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, you talk about the limited obligation bonds, and you separate those out. Now, those, the assessment districts, the reassessment districts, the ADs, the CFDs, all those were voted on by the respective, in this case, property owners, right?
That's correct.
And then, what's different on the city obligated bonds? The CDBG funds were borrowed based on anticipated federal revenues grants.
Correct.
And then, the COPs were based on the revenue stream that the city promises to pay the finance corporation so they can pay the debt. So, it's based on lease, basically.
It's based on lease, but it's generally, you know, it's general fund tax dollars repaying with it.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
So, Will asked me to provide a brief history on the central library financing, and if you can believe it, 1992, we financed the central library for $7.5 million. It's almost embarrassing to say these days. It was a 25-year issue. If I recall correctly, the interest rate was in the 6% or 7% range. In 1998, we refinanced the remaining issue, and I think we brought the rate down to 5% in 1998. And in November of 2010, when we issued the $126.7 million of COPs, 3.9 million represented the remaining portion of the original COPs that were, the original central library COPs, and they're still being paid over that 25-year term. So, we didn't extend the term, they'll be paid off in, what is that, 2017?
Mr. Mayor, quick question. So, obviously, those bonds didn't have a non-callable feature, or it expired after five years?
It expired after 10 years, each one.
So, we refinanced after six, so did we pay a penalty when we refinanced in 98?
In 98, what we would have, it was called an advanced refunding, so we escrowed, we refinanced, placed the money in escrow, and then the money was held to a future-
Until the callable aspect went away and we could pay it off.
Correct. Right. So, we're paying interest, and we're likely earning less interest on the escrow for that period of time while we were paying interest, but-
With the overall life of the loan, it made financial sense because the interest rates came down.
Correct.
It's nice having that non-callable feature. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. As finance people, we like flexibility, when it's affordable. So, the, you know, it's a good practice to review policies continuously, they reflect, to make sure they reflect the goals and objectives of the organization. It helps to incorporate, you know, right now, we have to incorporate some new legal requirements associated with SB 1029. We believe in the process of continuing improvement, even though we have a solid debt service policy today, we can do better. And so, it's time to review the policy, and there is, you know, the current council is looking for means for more public improvement, so we're going to look at ways, public input to the process, so we're going to look at ways to incorporate public input. But I did want to point out that until we make the amendments for SB 1029, we're precluded from issuing any new debt, and that includes the four pending assessment districts that will need financing here, likely, probably in June of this year.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a moment. You said what month?
Likely June, we'll do that.
Of next year?
Correct. We'll finance it. We will start the construction now, likely advance the funds, assuming you authorize it, and then do the financing in June.
This is, when you're talking about the assessment districts, you're talking about the undergrounding?
And these revisions, these requirements, you can make these adjustments piecemeal, so they're pretty innocuous. They came as a result of some abuses that were perpetrated by another agency, it wasn't us. And so, we just need to incorporate what you see on the screen into our policy, we've redlined it, and so, we can bring this to council for one quick approval, and then continue on making more substantive changes, if you like, later. So, I don't think timing's an issue, I just wanted to note, we need to get it done. So, we all kicked around options, or, you know, to retain more control over the terms. I got quite a beating over the make-whole call provision, as you know, it's not very restrictive, or it's not very flexible. And so, there are ways to accommodate that in the bond resolution. So, in the authorizing bond resolution, you gave us a lot of latitude to authorize, to negotiate what we thought was best. And based on, you know, market conditions that existed at the time, that may have, that would have been a topic of discussion. But what we can do is make it a requirement that the finance committee, along with financial advisors, underwriters, and bond counsel that understand the market and the options at the time, review and craft an authorizing bond resolution that would set parameters, you know, thou shall not issue a make-whole call, thou shall not have a lockout period greater than 10 years. So, those are things that you can prescribe, you can prescribe more things. You know, you shall not finance unicorns if we get to that point. But, so council can be as explicit as you want, and it would be indoctrinated, both in the debt policy, as well as the finance committee, a resolution, you know, that they would review and craft the authorizing resolution. So, that's one way you can retain control over the terms. Do you have any questions on that before I move on?
Looks like there's a question, yes.
Yeah. So, this is actually, this might be a good time to kind of stop for just a second and review what we're talking about, because the, so, this is, this actually is one of the reasons why I asked for this study session to be put together, because it's worth going back and remembering. So, first off, this is out in the hall. Okay. So, each of our yellow packets up here, I just want to call attention to the council and then anyone else in the audience, if they'd like to go back and look at it. You know, after the COPs were issued, the Stone and Youngberg went through and created an issuance, and closing memorandum is probably about as well-read as our CAFR every year. But this is actually, it's a really interesting document to go back through and kind of get a sense of what happened in terms of the pricing that Dan was talking about. And when he's talking about the issue of the authorizing bond resolution, in this one, you're really referencing, if I would understand a little bit better, Dan, you're referencing kind of a resolution authorizing the sale of the COPs.
That is correct. Essentially, the only limit that you really placed on us is how much, what was the maximum amount?
Let's be clear about you, it was the previous council, just for the record.
Yeah. It was seven years ago, so yes, definitely not us. But coming back around, so, I mean, that was one of the things when you, when we went back through, and we've talked about this, and so, I want to just make sure I'm asking a couple of questions, because I think it plays into the idea of what we're looking at in terms of some of the bond financing. Actually, I'll just point out real quickly that in this, it's not paged very well, but about midway through, there's a discussion from Standard and Poor's, Global Credit Portal, Ratings Direct. And one of the, interesting enough, actually, one of the knocks that we had on us for our ratings was, and I'll just say, at this time, was, "The city does not have a comprehensive debt management policy, but has a policy that debt service and capital contributions cannot exceed 5% of budget each year." So, I'll just point out, Dan, after the COPs were issued, you and the finance department went through and created the comprehensive debt management policies that we now have, right?
That is correct. I took that to heart. I'm competitive by nature, and when I saw good, not great, management policies, I wrote a small novel on what we should include in the debt policy. Sensibly, my deputy finance director pared that down into something a little bit more manageable, and that's the debt policy that you see today.
Okay. And so, when we're talking, and the reason I want to make sure, when I'm looking at this slide, we're talking apples to apples, if it's a bond, it has to go out to the vote, it has to go out to voters, but if it's a COP, it doesn't. Right?
Yeah. So, a general obligation, so bond is very generic, so I want to be careful about that, but if it was a general obligation bond, that requires a vote of the people, revenue bonds and COPs do not.
Right. Okay. So, fair enough. So, when we're, that's why I want to make sure I'm understanding, when I'm looking at the slide, what we're talking about for a go-forward basis, is we're really talking about, if we're talking about the resolution authorization, we're talking about a resolution authorization for a revenue bond or a COP, rather than a general obligation bond, because obviously, a general obligation bond would have to go to the voters.
Absolutely correct.
All right. So, one of the things that happened during the COP process was, the council had authorized, had made such a resolution, and in that resolution, they had authorized the, now, let's see if I can find the actual language. And for those of you who actually have this accessible, it would be Resolution 2010-126. And in that, it said that the city council desires to approve the form of a preliminary official statement. And then, you're right, Dan, the comment was that the form of the purchase agreement presented at the meeting and sale of the certificates is hereby approved, and the mayor, the city manager, and the director of administrative services is authorized to essentially make any of the amendments, additions, et cetera. And the thing that a lot of people talk about is the difference between the preliminary official statement allowing for a prepayment, and then you move into the, what was actually sold out on the COPs, which says, "The certificates are not subject to prepayment prior to maturity." On the A series and the B series has the prepayment. So, basically, what I just want to make sure we're talking about this, when the council authorized in the resolution for the changes, it said, "These specific people are allowed to make changes," and then, and the bond council is allowed to authorize the changes, which is normal. And then, it did change, and it got signed and sold. Right? That's how it went, that's how it happened?
Yes. There was quite a bit of discussion with two of the council members and two of the staff members about our options, given the current market conditions.
Right. And I actually, that's why I wanted to make sure that folks who are interested in this had this issuance and closing memorandum, because it actually goes in pretty great detail of what those financial circumstances were that led up to those decisions. Right?
Correct.
Okay. So, who were the council members, who were the staff members that were involved in that, in those discussions?
So, me, for one. And, let's see, I think I have a slide on here. So, yeah, who was involved in the decision of those? Two members of council, which would have included the mayor at the time, and then a second council member. Do you want me to name names?
Sure.
So, Mike Han, Mike Han and Keith Curry, both pretty well-seasoned in the financial markets and issuing debt. And then, two staff members would have been, Tracy McCrainer would have been the admin services director at the time, and I would have been the deputy director. So, you know, we weren't happy about the idea of a make-whole call. You know, we liked financial flexibility, we were reluctant to accept those terms, but some of the alternatives, given the market situations, were kind of ugly.
Okay. So, in the resolution, and this, and I'm not going to belabor this, because I want to make sure, if we're making any changes going forward, I want to make sure I'm understanding the structure. The mayor was authorized to make the changes, the admin services director was authorized to make the services, and those two people were obviously involved in the decisions. Those are the two that authorized the changes to the closing memorandum, or the- To the actual certificates of participation?
Well, so, they delegated certain terms, including pricing, to the admin services director and director. On the day of pricing, you know, the council members weren't there, we were at the, you know, next terminals, watching bids come in from the underwriters and investors. And we had to make a call, I mean, it was really based on preliminary discussions and pre-pricing terms, that, you know, make-whole call was going to be an absolute must in the taxable market. And on the non-taxable, remember, we issued a hybrid issue, Series A was non-taxable, Series B was taxable, and it was an investor's market. They were driving, there weren't the orders, normally, you know, when Newport Beach comes to market, it sells immediately. And markets were in flux, and orders were coming in slow, a big financial institution came in late in the game, halfway through the day, with a very, a $70 million fill-or-kill order, and we had to decide, do we accept these terms, they gave us two hours to make a decision, or back out altogether. And really, at the time, one of the concerns was that the Babs might, one, successive deal after deal were getting more expensive, and the, there was no guarantee that the BAB, the Babs were going to be reauthorized by Congress, and in fact, they weren't. So, we were in that November, December timeline, and we made a call, and it was Tracy and myself making the call at the terminal to say, okay, we'll accept the deal.
Okay. And you had, we had bond counsel at the time?
It would have been the financial advisor. So, bond counsel really acts as more of a historian and makes sure everything is legal, but pricing comes down to your financial advisor, your underwriter, Stone and Youngberg, and then, we were delegated the authority to make the call on behalf of the city.
Okay. Councilwoman Dixon, I see you're in the queue, did you want to follow up on anything?
Yes. Do you want to-
Sure. I've got a couple of other questions, but if you want to follow up on anything, go ahead.
Just to interject, and a couple of questions. Was a city's finance director in these meetings? You were a deputy finance director. Who was the finance director at this time?
So, the finance director was Tracy McCrainer.
He was in the meeting?
She.
She? Excuse me. Okay. All right. During this two-hour intense period, were you, how were you modeling and doing the financial projections of with-call, without-call, at the current pricing that was being confronted?
Well, pre-pricing, they would have already had received indicative pricing the week before, so they would have gone out, this is Stone and Youngberg, would have reached out to bondholders saying, okay, these are the yields, the terms that we're thinking, and based on the input they received from the indicative pricing, would have structured a deal. And it was already looking like there was going to be quite a premium for, if we wanted the flexibility of the typical, the typical tax-exempt issue, recall, has a 10-year lockout, and then it's callable without a premium, or callable at par. So, that's the typical deal, didn't look like that was going to be an option in the taxable market. In the taxable market, the typical thing is a make-whole call. So, it was already structured and being marketed as a make-whole call on the day of pricing.
But you were saying that this was going on several days before, which would have included the date of the council meeting on that previous Tuesday?
Post the council meeting. So, the council meeting would have authorized us to go out to the market, test the markets, and that would have been the underwriter making calls to their big clients, to the PIMCOs of the world, you know, institutional customers, and saying, you know, what sort of, you know, what are you looking for? And they would have come back with a structure. And then, the day of pricing, we place a pricing structure, and then orders will come in that may, we'll see, we may be oversubscribed for certain bonds and undersubscribed in others. And by and large, we were undersubscribed for a lot of the deal, until a big institutional investor came in with a $70 million fill-or-kill order, which means, you've got two hours to decide, fill the entire $70 million, or kill the deal. But the make-whole provisions were already attached as part of that, and even still, it was still a buyer's market.
Okay.
And I think Mark has something to say. He's, trust me, he's the expert in the room.
Just a couple of comments. I'm glad you read what the resolution authorized originally. Typically, the resolution will have parameters in it, and those parameters can be as restrictive as you want to be. And Dan had some ideas, I'm prepared to comment on them if you'd like. But then, you authorized the issuance of the preliminary official statement. The preliminary official statement is a marketing document. It's a marketing document that is supposed to be a template for potential terms. So, a POS that's approved by a governing body will tend to have as much flexibility as possible in order to give options to the marketplace. So, the fact that the POS was silent to the taxable redemption provisions originally, that was a good thing. That was to preserve the flexibility. If we can get away with making the bonds callable, you had that option. But when you're approving a POS, you're not approving something that's stamped in stone and you can't deviate from. The resolution is where, if you want to get into this level of detail, and for example, say, "We don't want non-callable bonds, we want at least a 10-year redemption." Do we want a maximum maturity? Do we want to talk about couponing and interest rates and the like? The operative document to do that would be in a more defined and restrictive resolution. But it's very, very typical to see opened-ended preliminary official statements, that you're approving the ability to post that to the marketplace. We're precluded, we cannot have an underwriter or municipal advisor distribute that official, preliminary official statement until after the governing body has approved its issuance. official statement until after the governing body has approved its issuance. So, there's a clear sort of stepping stone of things that we have to do. And again, we try to embed as much flexibility as you're comfortable with in that POS, and then typically, we come back after the pricing, and we finalize the official statement with the final terms and conditions of the bond issue.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pieter.
Okay, so, let me try and recreate this. We've got, the POS goes out, which is basically, we're going to sell bonds, here's what we're thinking. And you, like you said, you want to create that into as flexible of a document as possible. And then, the council, in this case, the previous council in 2010, authorized you to go out and actually sell the bonds via resolution. And in the resolution, they would put requirements or restrictions for that, like you said, if we didn't want to have a non-callable note, to at least have that go away after 10 years or whatever. So, it was presented to the council the night before you sold. And what was presented to the council? Was there a lot of discussion in these two council members with the staff on callable versus non-callable? Or was it discuss, or was the discussion basically? In non-callable versus callable, people need to understand, it's basically a prepayment penalty on your mortgage, right? So, you can't prepay your mortgage or refinance your mortgage without paying a penalty, assuming the market's gone lower at that time. If it goes higher, I guess you could get a discount. But the, what was, I guess the question comes back to, what was presented to council?
Well, poor Mark wasn't here, so. But honestly, that's where we could have done better. There was a lot of discussion. Finance committee, first of all, was a different, was composed of a different group. There were three members of council. The financing team that essentially met to go over the terms with the underwriters, with the financial advisor, would have been two members of city council, and then the finance director and the deputy finance director. And we would have had tons of meetings prior to the council meeting. But at the council meeting, there's always, there's always a struggle between how much, what information is overwhelming, and, you know, certainly, Mark can attest to, there are 100 different call features that are out there. Canary calls, European calls, Asian calls, Bermuda calls.
So, the actual process of selling the bonds can be complicated and moves around a lot?
It is, and we chose not to talk, I mean, I don't think it was intentional, it was, I think for us, we were living it, the call feature was assumed based on the market conditions. But we should have made it clear to the rest of the council members that essentially, this was a non-callable deal. We called it a make-whole call, but for, it's just, you know, it's one less, one less lower than a purely non-callable deal. That was the conditions of market at the time, and unfortunately, staff did not do a good job educating the rest of the council members that that was indeed the case, that this bond, set of bonds would not be callable.
So, the two council members, Hen and Curry, both wizards of smart and finance industry, at least self-proclaimed, were the two that were counseling and working with finance and working with the directors. When it came to the whole council, basically, the finance committee, which is made up of those two guys, and I'm not sure who the third guy was at the time, it was before Petras' time, so.
Leslie Dagel.
Okay, so, it would come before the council, the council said, yeah, whatever the finance committee says, and they presented and heard from you, and then the next day, the option came, what, in order to maintain the interest rate the way you want, or what you evaluated was the best deal at the time, was to go with this mortgage prepayment penalty, or the make-whole or callable feature, non-callable feature?
Well, I was silent to all of that, because this happens prior to pricing, and so, at the time that you authorized the bonds, as uncomfortable as it is, you were giving staff the authority to negotiate the pricing of the bonds, and the only thing that you really limited is, who can make those decisions, and how much can you issue? Now, that was by choice.
Then the council's resolution basically said, staff's going to do this, with the mayor being the guy that would approve it on behalf of the council? Or was it totally your call?
Well, I
I'm trying to understand the, you know, A, how did the logistics work, and B, who got us into this mess is secondary, but.
Well, I think collectively, we all agreed that this was the mess, that we were, we thought the mess was the right way to go, and
So, we collectively, meaning you, the four people, two council members and two staffs?
And then, and then our, and then our experts.
Okay.
And then council ultimately only knew that, you know, had authorized the extent of the bonds to be issued.
So, really, most of the council wasn't in on and didn't really understand the whole make-whole callable feature. It was really Mike Hen and Keith Curry, along with their decision that that's the best deal on the market, and as you could see in your slide, that it saved us $720,000 per year, based on real market conditions, because your alternative would have cost that much more. Had you waited longer, you might have had different market conditions, but you don't know that, you were making the decision on the fly.
Correct.
And you didn't know that the interest rates were going to come down, or what they would be like if we wanted to refinance after, say, 10 years, whether it would have saved more than that $720, you were taking the guess based on what you had. And the decision was, let's go with this prepayment penalty or non-callable feature.
Sure, if I could quote one of our finance committee's members, Larry Tucker, I think put a pretty, you know, you know, if you're making sometimes these decisions, you want to, you want to protect your downside risk and lock in the rate, rather than spend money for the potential of an upside savings, if you will.
Yeah, most people call that a bird in the hand instead of two in the bush.
Sure.
You want to go with what you can, what you know you can accomplish.
Now, our fine financial advisor may take odds with the $720,000 precise number, but in our view, the practical decision was, do we want to spend $720,000 more a year to preserve an option that we might not exercise, given that the markets were what we thought were a 40-year low?
Right, and they turned out not to be. So, your crystal ball wasn't as great as you might have thought at the time, but it was still what you had.
And we still really don't know, because it's three years out, not to be argumentative, I mean, we, but, you know, the first call is three years from now, so we don't know what rates we'll be in in three years.
Or you could have done like you did with the library bond and refinanced early and escrowed the difference.
Maybe.
Yeah, but you, it isn't even worth evaluating at this point.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman O'Dell, do you want to return to your line of questioning?
Yeah, that'd be great. Would you mind going back to slide eight, Dan? Perfect. So, so this discussion is actually a really good, this is, that was a really long digression, admittedly. No, no, it's okay, but it's important, because this is, I think, for folks up here who didn't live through that, it's really helpful to understand the history of why we're even having this discussion now about what the debt policies might look like. Because to Councilman Pieter's question, what the procedure and structure was, that's the resolution that I was referencing, because the resolution was, I mean, it was an interesting resolution, because what it allowed for was maximum discretion from, you know, the three specific people. And then it actually, it actually included a statement that the city manager, the director of administrative services are authorized to reject any terms presented if determined not to be in the best interests of the city. So, there's a backstop there. And then it also included a, the requirement that the mayor or the city manager authorize the, and execute the final official statement. So, there's a backstop there. And so, so the question, I think, that the council's going to have to grapple with at some point, and I would frankly like to see the finance committee grapple with at first, is probably, what do we want to see down the road in terms of these resolutions, and what the procedure is, and how, how much oversight needs to happen in these deals, or do we give maximum oversight, maximum discretion again? And that's, that's why, I just got to be honest with you, if I hadn't read through a lot of this, I wouldn't quite understand what we're talking about here, but I think it's really important that we have an understanding of what happened before, so that when we're going back and doing this, because we have to legally anyway, go through and look at our debt policies again, might as well go through and understand this, how it played out. Go ahead.
If I can make a comment, I would sort of analogize your situation to what happened with Poway Unified School District. You may have heard, a number of years ago, the school district authorized the issuance of general obligation bonds for the school district, and they used this instrument called capital appreciation bonds. And you probably read about it in the news, it was on 60 Minutes, but they, the board, school board, approved $90 million of bonds, that over a 40-year period, it took $1.1 billion to repay them. Now, in the context of an overall program, a multi-hundred-million-dollar program, that could have fit well. But that particular board, they weren't presented that deal in the context of an overall program. They weren't shown debt service schedules to show, they were given an authorization to approve, that delegated authority to the folks. Because of the outrage associated with the national exposure, legislation was created, AB 182, which now has placed restrictions on school districts' ability to use those instruments. It hasn't said, you know, they still have to go to a vote of the people, because they're general obligation bonds. But if they are to use that instrument, there are eight checklist issues that they have to go through, two of, one of which is, they need to have a workshop, a public workshop in front, an open session, where there's a workshop that describes not only that financing, but how it fits into an overall plan of finance. And they're required to have that first workshop, and then the next subsequent scheduled meeting take up the item. So, it has, it has the transparency of being presented to the public, discussed, and then there's a cooling off period, if it's a week or two weeks, to sort of think about it, come back as a governmental entity, ask questions, and then approve the financing. So, when Dan first asked me to sort of take a look at this, and sort of comment on forensically what could have been done better, then going forward, what you might want to consider, I think the transparency initially, in the approval process, given the luxury of maybe a little bit more time to present more information, rather than kind of an opened-ended resolution and the like, might have maybe precluded, or at least had more conversation. But clearly, thinking about on a going-forward basis, how do you prevent this from happening again in the future, is a more transparent process. So, a requirement.
Thank you.
We've got to look at going to a finance committee potentially, and having them review, and then in a presentation to the council, a very transparent process, and then looking at the actual authorizing resolution as the opportunity to impose more restrictions in that, to me, seemed, it's analogous to what happened with AB 182 in school districts, and it would seem to me a good approach to take going forward.
Thank you. I have a somewhat different take on a lot of this. I actually think that both Mike Hen and Keith Curry are very intelligent, and they know what they're doing in this scenario. It makes sense, the way you set it up, because you have to make a decision, that you don't get to bring back to the council, based on the market at the time. I personally am of the thought that a cap on when this can be done, as well as a transparency, are very relevant. But Dan, I want to take you back a little bit, just for my own edification. What was the date when this market, when this occurred, when the financial institution came in? Do you remember?
We had the bond author's resolution authorized, I believe, on November 10th, and I think we went to, we did indicative pricing right afterwards, so we had a week to gather information, and I believe we sold bonds on, priced and sold on the 19th, maybe?
So, a bit ago, you had mentioned that institution that came in?
Mm-hmm.
For $70 million?
Yep.
Who was that? You recall?
I recall, I probably shouldn't say.
Oh, is it not? No, it's okay, if you're not supposed to say, Mr. Harp.
That info, well, Mark can comment, but the, usually, the under, that's information from the underwriter. Was public? Okay, it was PIMCO.
Okay, excellent company. Now, where were you when this happened?
I was in the pricing room.
Which is where?
It was in the Fieldman Rollup office, where we're monitoring, we're monitoring the pricing as it's coming in, but there would have been a syndicate of five different underwriters out, trying to reach certain markets, retail investors, institutional investors, so that included Stony and Youngberg, I have a hard time saying this, B of A Merrill Lynch, Raymond James.
Was it B of A Merrill Lynch then? I guess so.
Yeah, it was BAML, it was B of A Merrill Lynch then, Raymond James, and I don't remember who, and Delarosa.
You seem to remember it pretty well. Geographically, though, where is this location? You said the office, but
Oh, so, I mean, the office is a terminal where we're feeding the information, that's in Irvine, but the underwriters are, you know, throughout the nation.
But, so you were in Irvine?
Mm-hmm.
With Tracy?
Correct.
Do you remember about what time of the day it was?
Well, pricing probably would have started first thing in the morning, and we probably wrapped things up around 3:00 o'clock or so, I think, after markets close.
And you said you had a two-hour window?
Correct.
That's kind of exciting, almost like a boiler room situation?
Yeah.
Do you remember it?
Yeah.
I'm sure you must.
Yeah.
Who'd you call during that time period?
We may have discussed that with both the mayor and the city manager.
Do you recall specifically who you discussed with?
I don't, I may not have placed the call, since I was not the director at the time, but, so it may have been Tracy. Dave, do you remember?
I remember calling.
Were you present when Tracy made these phone calls, Dan?
Yes.
And you specifically remember Tracy calling city manager, Dave Kiff?
I remember call, I don't know who she
I remember talking to Tracy, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Talking to Dan right now, though. So, Dan, you were there for that, and who else did Tracy call?
I believe we spoke to the mayor as well, because he was one of the most seasoned as well.
So, I am of the opinion that what you did was the correct protocol. I disagree on the amount, and how it was sort of done as far as, I guess there's a transparency component to it, but in my opinion, you analyzed the market, you made the decision. I would not have sought an amount that large, or built a civic center this large. But obviously, you had some procedure in place. I appreciate you being forthright and discussing who the conversation was with, because ultimately, there were some questions about who those conversations were with. As far as I'm concerned, it was completely legal, and it sounds like pretty basic protocol, in my opinion. Looking back, and the reason why I want to talk to Dan, not you, Dave, although I can appreciate you trying to protect your director, what would you have done differently? Just your personal experience, if anything, because I think you really were in the process, and you can tell us, you have the most knowledge to give on this specific process.
So, I shared this with, I think, Will, and perhaps council member Dixon, but at the time, with the market conditions, and not having the benefit of hindsight, and knowing where rates were going to go, I would, I would have continued with the make-whole call. The one thing I would have done differently is call. The one thing I would have done differently is speaking to Mark Young, that as mature as the BAB market had become, that some more sophisticated investor, or issuers, had negotiated a better out clause if the feds reneged, or changed, the deal terms of the sequestration.
Which is sort of what happened.
It, it did happen, and some, some were, you know, there was a, some were more lenient than others, where it was, anything changes, you're out, which that would have been my preference, or, you know, it had to be material. We had some level, but not enough to likely get us out. The make-whole call, I don't think was the wrong decision at the time, knowing what, with what we knew.
Now, is that foresight that other entities had into that federal exemption?
No, I think, I mean, we discussed the risk, and I specifically asked some of the councils, we brought up and said, well, what about, we at least need to discuss the risk of the feds reneging on this program. And the overwhelming thought is, the feds are never going to do that, you're crazy. So...
Now, that overwhelming thought, that's a complete reneging, or an adjustment, as we've seen?
Well, yeah, I don't think I, I contemplated a partial, I was thinking that, what if they stopped? That would be horrible. And, but, but that was, you know, we discussed it, had a, what I thought was a thoughtful discussion, and dismissed it.
So there was a consensus of sorts?
Correct.
Who was part of that consensus?
So, it would have been myself, Mike Hen, Keith Curry, Tracy McCrainer, as well as the underwriters, and the financial advisors. Now, they may not have advised us, they may have informed us of the risk, but I'm not sure that anybody can predict the future, or what they could have advised us, you know, in a forward-looking sort of situation. It wasn't a numerical, this was a risk that they, you know, it was their duty and obligation to point out to us, but how do you measure that risk? I think it's beyond the scope of a financial advisor and underwriter, so.
Interesting. Well, I appreciate you letting the residents and those watching see the thought process, and what happens in that situation. That is where I think some of the request for transparency comes from. Again, I believe that although I would not have behaved the same way, based on the dollar amount that I would have sought to finance the center with, that all parties acted in good faith, as you would imagine, and there's an extreme level of competency in that room at the time, whether it's phone calls or physically. But definitely, we can take away some learning lessons, one of which you just mentioned, and others, we hope to propose, I believe, from the dais, to be discussed further later date. So, thank you. Councilman Herdman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what you just said, Mayor, and what I've heard today, and the extent of what I've heard today, Mark, I have just one question for you. Do you consider us to be in a mess, when it comes to this? I don't think you heard my question.
Boy, that's a zinger.
Yeah. Well, that term was used, and I, I, I'd like an answer to it.
So I was, Dan asked me to do sort of a forensic look, with the best information that I had, which is the closing memo that was prepared by Stonen Youngberg. Again, Stonen Youngberg was your senior managing underwriter. It was, it did not have Fieldman Rollup's name on it anywhere, so I can't comment on the financial advisors' review of that information. When I did look at it, I noticed, and I commented, that, and we have information services, that Bloomberg, TM3, and the like, so we were able to go back and see what was going on in the market at the time. We were able to see other California municipal issues that were being sold at the time, and other BABS. And I did comment that there were some BABS. I will say, with more sophisticated, frequent issuers of debt, D-WAP, Department of Water and Power, SoCal Met Water, LAX, East Bay Mud, I mean, large issuers who were taking advantage of BABS, who had also been involved with derivatives, which is a naughty word down here, and were used to analyzing risks, and quantifying the financial benefits of taking on more risk. In the BABS, as Dan did highlight, towards the end of 2010, the marketplace referred to it as the Babalanch, because the, what was restricting the BAB market wasn't a federal allocation. There wasn't a $50 billion limitation, there was a timing limitation. And so, at the time that you all were in the BAB market, we were experiencing the Babalanch, and a lot of people trying to get deals done, and really a buyer's market. When I look at the work that was done, I think my one criticism is the, when you're looking at a BAB with a make-whole call, it's essentially a non-callable bond. We could have, you could have, looked at doing a non-callable, tax-exempt bond. And while there weren't, there wasn't another $100 million tax-exempt, non-callable, AAA city deal out there, so I can't go back and forensically and tell you how lower of a tax-exempt interest rate that would have had, compared to the tax-exempt with a call, which was the analysis that was done at the time. I personally think it's an analysis that should have been done. The, the decision could have been the same, it might have been $400,000 a year in savings, 300, 500, I can't forensically go back and determine that. But my one criticism is, I think there should have been an apples-to-apples. And, and by doing that, we then would have focused the discussion a little bit more narrowly on, okay, what risk are we exposing ourselves to, by doing this BAB, compared to a tax-exempt non-callable? And the risk would have been exactly what Dan just laid out. What the IRS giveth, the IRS can take it away. When you issue a tax-exempt bond, the investor takes the risk that the IRS changes the tax law, not you as the issuer. In a BAB, you as the issuer take that risk. So it kind of goes back to the issue of, I can't forensically sit here and say, yes, it was a good decision, or a bad decision. At the time, you needed to raise $120 million to build a civic center, and at the time, the economics of the BABS were compelling. And in hindsight, with interest rates staying, and then going near all-time lows, it, do you feel good? Is it, is it a great place to be? No. But, given the facts and circumstances at the time, I think, with the exception of the underwriter and advisor potentially providing an apples-to-apples comparison, and I can't, in hindsight, say how that apples-to-apples would have looked at, but you very well could have made the same decision, and, and at the time, you probably had just as much a chance that interest rates would be higher in the future, and therefore, the make-whole call didn't hurt you, as you have now, where it historical lows, and it'd be great to be able to have a 10-year call on those bonds.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, if you're ready, we, go ahead.
One second. Councilman Herdman, do you have a follow-up?
I didn't get an answer to my question. Specific answer, are we in a mess? Given everything that you said, given the circumstances at the time, given everyone involved, given the market?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't clarify it as being in a mess.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one more slide, if you'd like, and that was kind of how to, how to maybe increase public awareness and involvement, including potential vote, if you'd like to see that.
Let's close on that one?
Okay.
Pull it up if you like, but we can close, I still think there's some questions.
All right.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions as follow-up, really to drive to the process, improved process going forward. In that period of time, November, December, and all this frenetic activity, urgency, I remember reading or hearing that, was it Mr. Curry and Mr. Hen were actually in San Francisco? Was somebody in San Francisco dealing with this at the same time? This boiler room kind of experience?
Well, we all went to San Francisco to present to the rating agencies, but that would have been prior, well prior to the...
So it wasn't during this period of time, this one eight-hour day, that things were going?
Correct.
Okay. I just was wondering, the sense of urgency, and in November 19th, and we still had, the BABS were still going to be available until December 31st, was that correct?
Correct, but, you know, the further you get into the holidays, the less interest that you get, people, you know, start paying, stop paying attention.
Do you know off the top of your head, because of sequestration, that has reduced the benefit that we have received from the IRS? Do you know what that amounts to?
Insignificant.
Oh, really? All right. Back to process, if in the future, whatever we contemplate in terms of a major financial investment, hopefully, this is once, two generations that we just went through, is it always the first instinct to go for a general or a bond financing? The city, this city, at the time, and remains to be the case, has excellent reserves. Could you just enlighten me as to why there wasn't a hybrid approach of putting up cash from our reserves, and, as well as financing from a bond? Why did we go to 100% bond financing?
We didn't go for 100% financing, so the civic center, at last count, was, ended up being 140, and we issued about $123 million in bonds for, for the civic center.
All right, why didn't we go 50/50?
Well, you know, the irony of credit, and maintaining your credit, is having cash reserves. So if you deplete your reserves for one thing, you buy too big of a house, or you load up your credit cards and don't, you know, you...
But I don't think we were in that situation. I mean, we have healthy reserves. I mean, we had a margin for error. I've just...
It was a thoughtful process through the, through the, through the facilities' financial plan, which had its roots well before the civic center process, was, how much can we set aside today, plus developer contributions, to replace all of our buildings on a perpetual basis?
Well...
Councilmember Dixon, I don't know if I could help a little further?
All right.
Remember, with, as Dan mentioned, the FFP, the thought was that if you borrow for the civic center, even as much as that amount was, and I could certainly understand the concern about the amount, and I probably share, share it, and shared it, the rest of the projects could be cash-financed, the fire stations, the marina park, and that's indeed what we did. We cash-financed everything else. So it was really to look at it over time.
Well, all right, so going forward, if we establish some go-forward principles to explore all methods of financing, I just don't, I've heard suggestions, the fact that $100 million bond package is, maybe was a better financing deal, better than a $50 million bond packaging deal?
Absolutely. You're going to get more interest by the institutional investors, who don't have to read one perspective.
So, I guess just weighing all the pluses and the minuses that go into making the final decision, I think is something to wait for.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's the right thing to do, to take your marquee building, and, and finance, finance that. It's, you know, it's a great credit, it's a large, larger the deal, the better, better pricing you're going to get, the more market participation you're going to get. The issue that we really bumped against was the flux in the market.
Well, all right, so just, I guess my closing comment on this section of the discussion is that no one ever thought that there would be the economic crisis that we had in 2008, that the interest rates, now we're in year, almost year 10 of 1% interest rates, and that, who would have ever, I mean, that, so that was, I mean, we, none of us had the ability of foresight like that. That's just a shame that we couldn't take advantage of these low interest rates, so. Thank you, Mayor.
So, Mr. Mayor, we had three potential items that you could maybe direct the Finance to look, Finance Committee to look like, and look at, in terms of more participation. You could certainly add to it, morph onto the, so they're up on the screen there. One would be to mirror a protest hearing for Prop 218, which would provide everyone in the city with a mailed notification of a potential debt issuance. I think there's merit to that, in timing. Another one, I think there's merit to each of these, which, this one's kind of an interesting twist on, on what I've heard a couple of you say, and that is, early in the process, so before you do full design work, before you do an EIR, before you invest a lot of money in a project that the voters may not want, send that to the voters with the proposed financing, and give some parameters to it. It will be a, I'll use the police station as example, the police headquarters, because that's probably the next project that could involve any financing at all. Say, the police station's going to be this many square feet, it's going to be at this location, it's going to be a mix of cash and financing to this extent, and send it to the voters early, before you really sink a lot of funds into it. And then the last one up on the board is, again, after some things are designed, after sequel work is done, send that to the voters. That's a, that's a path, too. That's how you treat it, like a general obligation bond. So, I'm welcome, we certainly welcome your ideas and guidance for the Finance Committee from here.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff. We have a question on, from, or a comment from Airtime Duffield, and then we'll bring it back to...
Oh, this is just a real easy one, from the boat guy, that shouldn't be even asking a question about, in this category. However, could you tell me how much, if any, construction was underway before the approval of the bond, or how much, if none, had started, or?
To my recollection, we'd, I'm trying to think of when we started. We were here in the building in the end of 2013, it was roughly a two-and-a-half-year construction process, so, none.
So, none?
Yeah.
So, but there had been engineering and design to get to the price?
Yeah, we were at probably 90% construction documents, so we had done all of the design work, except finalizing the construction documents. We had done all the EIR, so we were probably a million and a half into it.
So, is that item number two on your Gather Public Input, is what you're getting at?
Actually, that scenario would be item number three.
Three, oh, that's right.
If you did item number two, you'd be well before that.
Okay, thanks.
I'm looking at the calendar, two and a half years to construct. It didn't go to the council for bond until November of, of 2009, is it, or 2010?
It was 2010 when it went to the council, November.
Right, and two and a half years, we opened in May of 13?
Yeah, so I think we really, we really started, sorry, we opened bids in the beginning of December, after the bond issuance, and we started awarding contracts.
But, hadn't you awarded, like, the grading, or parking structure?
I'd have to go back and look.
Contracts before that?
I think that was part of the overall package in December, the big bond opening day, but I'd have to go back and look, Mr. Pieter.
Yeah, because if it took two and a half years, that's before November of 10.
One, one technical thing that Mark will get is, is in February of 2010, I did go to council with a reimbursement resolution for about $125 million, and basically, what that does is, you want to get that reimbursement resolution in place prior to actually any construction. So I may have had some fear that, that the construction was going to start soon, so in February, I... I asked for that authority to reimburse ourselves from bond proceeds back in February. So there may have been some component that I was nervous about, but then, as the tax attorneys will tell you, sometimes those get stale and people forget, so they asked me to do another reimbursement resolution in November of 2010.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Dan, take a deep breath, relax. Personally, so this is the third bullet point regarding ballot initiative for lease financing over a certain amount, either a certain dollar amount, or alternatively, a certain percentage of the general fund. I'm very flexible on this, Lieutenant, on what my colleagues would like to see. The intent of that initiative proposal is not to micromanage staff on some details about a potential police station or a Civic Center, nor is it to slow down the process. The intent is to put boundaries and limits on the scope and cost of projects. I believe the residents of Newport Beach would prefer the city live within its means and not take a risk that could become compounded by unforeseeable situations, like the unfunded pension liability, for example. So that is why I'm in support of the third, and I concur with Councilman O'Neill that it should be addressed and looked at very closely with the advice of professionals like Mr. Young at the Finance Committee level, and be offered to the residents of Newport Beach in a very reasonable manner that will let them know that they will have a say going forward on very large projects involving any form of debt or obligation. Any other instructions to staff here, from the DIAS?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Piattar.
Similarly, I like the idea of taking projects and financing, especially if we're going to go into debt, to the voters. I am all in favor of doing it early on, so that we're not spending a lot of money in A&E, that the voters may decide to change their mind. So my input would be is, let's make the ballot initiative a requirement, and I would do it in the form of a charter amendment.
Yeah, that's, that was my proposal, and jointly with you, Councilman Piattar, a little over a year ago, it's correct. Councilman Herman?
Are you, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I do, this is for you, a question for you. Are you suggesting that the Finance Committee put the dollar, fill in the dollar amount on this, and come back to us with a dollar amount, or are you...
Yes, but it'd purely be a recommendation, there could be change of the DIAS, and input could still be given to staff by you directly, as long as there's no Brown Act violation issue.
Okay.
Any other comments or input? Councilman O'Neill?
Yeah, I, so Mayor Muldoon and Councilwoman Dixon and I all sit on the Finance Committee, so I'll probably work through some of the issues at the Finance Committee level, but just wanted to say real quick, thanks, Dan, for putting this together. Thank you for bringing a financial advisor who was outside the process, so that we can have a little bit, yeah, a little bit more independent discussion, I suppose, yeah, that's a good word. But anyway, I just wanted to say thanks. I know this is a complicated issue. It's a complicated issue that's been discussed for years inside the city, so it's worth talking about, especially in the context of how to work through the procedures on a going-forward basis, so, thanks.
Can I just say one more thing? Yes, Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor, and I think if, well, as we, first of all, thank you for bringing the suggestion that this come before the Finance Committee. I strongly agree with that, and I think we'll have good, we certainly have excellent expertise in our Finance Committee, and I think we'll have a good discussion about all of these options. And when we bring this back with a recommendation from the Finance Committee, we'll have a more involved community discussion. But I think I'm hearing today's, this study session, some good understanding of actually what happened in that very contentious period of time, and I think I commend staff for bringing clarity to what happened. I, for one, can speak for myself, have a better understanding and agreement, perhaps agreement is a strong word, but if I had been a member of the Finance Committee, a member of the City Council at that time, I believe, under that set of circumstances, I would have been not happy to go without a call provision, but I think, given the financial parameters that were in existence at that time, I probably would have gone with that decision with a deep gulp, but, so I hope that maybe we're moving beyond that, because it has been so contentious in our community, and when this comes back from the Finance Committee, it will have been thoroughly reviewed and discussed, and with some solid basis for whatever the recommendation will be, to support a more transparent process going forward, a more flexible process going forward, and a process that our whole community will understand and have an opportunity to voice their opinion on. So thank you very much.
Mr. Avery?
Yeah, this was really, really good today. As much as I don't like rehashing this stuff, to me, it's sort of like in the rearview mirror, but this is absolutely necessary, I think, to move forward. It's really important, and I think it's important for the public to realize how difficult it is, how complicated it is, to make the right decision. In fact, it's almost impossible to tell the right decision when you're in the room like that, but it occurs to me, there was a sense of urgency, and you have a two-hour window, that's incredible for that amount of potential financial liability to be placed upon the city. So I'm, I think all these, all three of these initiatives have a lot of merit to at least bring the public residents in as partners, so they're following it, and we get, we hear some ideas, and we get a sense of how people feel, and there's plenty of experts out there, but I think we're all together in this, we're all residents, and definitely more transparency is needed, but I just hope people take with them after today, if you've watched this. It was, I think, the best decision that could have been made, obviously, wasn't made, but I defy anybody to say, oh, I absolutely know what I would have done in that situation. It's just, it's tough, and we just, unfortunately, things, the tide went against us, so, but I absolutely believe there should have been more transparency, more deliberation, slow the process down. So often, in the world of, the real world, accidents happen when people are forced into situations of quick decisions, and in this situation, we, I just believe, we really didn't have any reason to push it hard. There were some thoughts why, but you really need to sort of stop the process and go, okay, let's just take a breather here, and let's get some more folks involved, more transparency, and even that, in that moment, was hard to do, but now we've got an opportunity to do something really good here, to bring that into a part of any future process, dealing with this kind of liability, potential liability for all the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Herman?
Just, I just have a quick question, Mayor. Not of you, but I'm not familiar with Prop 218, notice and protest hearing procedures. What level of protest has to come in in order for a hearing to be held?
So it would, you would automatically hold a hearing, and people would be invited to either send in their concerns before or during the hearing. You could set the threshold at whatever you wanted, 25%. Prop 218 is focused at 50%, though.
Thank you. Seeing other comments from the DIAS, should we go to the public for this item? Public comments, please step forward.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Like Councilmember Dixon, I think it's generally wise for cities, as we would do in our personal life, to be patient and safe for the things that it wants, rather than incurring debt for them. I think that's a good principle to try to stick to. I think it's also wise for city councils to act collectively in public, as they are supposed to, and not delegate or expect individual members to make decisions on behalf of them, because those decisions are made in places where the public does not see them. As to the slide and the options you have up here, it was not quite clear from the presentation. I assume that everybody is assuming that the ballot initiatives we're talking about, the ballot measures, would be binding votes and not advisory ones. If they were simply advisory, that would, I don't think, do what you're wanting to do. And regarding the slide, I have to admit, I was a little unable to interpret what the subject of the study session was today. I naively thought it was about the amendments to the debt policy, and I did see that the Finance Committee is meeting on Thursday, and they published an agenda yesterday, and it has the redlined debt policy, so I thought you were talking about that. And as near as I could make out, looking at it hurriedly this morning, it has a great deal of redlining that has nothing at all to do with what's up here. I think that redlining has to do with the Senate Bill 1029, not quite sure, maybe other improvements. I think it would have been helpful for the whole council to have seen that redlined debt policy, so we know what we're talking about here today. And as far as the Senate Bill 1029, for those who are interested in it, and the advice the California Debt Investment and Advisory Commission is giving to the cities about debt issuance, they have an excellent webinar from last March that is available on their website, and that kind of explains the background of the principles they're imposing, and I think it's useful to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, thank you, staff. Next up, we have drones, which I'm sure we'll not drone on nearly as long.
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Pasaros. I'm obviously with the Police Department, and I'm the Support Services Commander. We've been asked to discuss drone usage in the city of Newport Beach, and the city's response to citizen concerns involving drones. With me today is Tom Incheff, he is our Police IT Coordinator, and, where did Tom go? Oh, he's sitting to my right. He's the Police IT Coordinator, he's also a licensed Part 107 UAS pilot and a licensed private pilot. From the City Attorney's Office, we also have Deputy City Attorney Annie Morano with us today. The items for discussion for the presentation today are listed above. What are small unmanned aircraft systems or drones? What is the difference between recreational flight and commercial flight? What types of airspace does drone pilot, does a drone pilot in Newport need to know about? What regulations does the state of California impose on drone flight? How are other cities addressing this issue? And we'll have a question and comment period at the end. What are drones? On this slide, you will see the FAA description of a drone. For our purposes, we'll focus on the quadcopter style of drone, and we actually placed what we call a quadcopter style of drone up on the podium. And for this presentation, that's primarily the type of drone that we'll be addressing, and as you can see, there's a gimbal, and there's a camera mounted at the bottom of the drone. The ability to remotely view and record is one of the primary privacy concerns of citizens. Issues with both privacy and noise have been raised by the citizens of Newport Beach involving drones. Currently, there's two ways to fly drones, commercially and recreationally. The FAA divides drone flight into two distinct categories, and again, those are commercial and recreational flight. Commercial flight can best be described as any flight that is for compensation or for the furtherance of a business or organization. Couple examples of that would be photography for pay, site inspections, real estate sales. Recreational flight is flight that is purely for the enjoyment of the pilot, it's a recreational hobby, and an example of that would just be personal photography. Flying as a recreational pilot, this is the bulk of what we see in Newport Beach, and quite frankly, it's the bulk of the industry at this point, is the recreational pilot. Unfortunately, most citizens will not be aware of requirements from the FAA. Citizens will need to be educated on the requirements for recreational flight in our city. Three methods of education are police officer contact, website-based education, and community outreach programs. Requirements for recreational flying, and I'm actually going to read through these. The aircraft is flown strictly for hobby or recreational use. The aircraft is operated in accordance with a community-based set of safety guidelines and within the programming of a nationwide, community-based organization. The aircraft is limited to not more than 55 pounds. The aircraft is operated in a manner that does not interfere with and gives way to any manned aircraft. When flown within five miles of an airport, the operator of the aircraft provides the airport operator and the airport air traffic control tower with prior notice of the operation. Flying for work, we all know Newport Beach, we all know the natural beauty of Newport Beach, and we're always going to have photographers, we're going to have industries within our city that want to use the drone as a tool. For example, the ability to photograph homes for sale along the coast is a benefit to local real estate. All commercial flight must fall within the framework of the following federal regulations. And the requirements for commercial flight, and again, I'm going to read through these. For commercial flight, you must have a remote pilot, airman certificate, you must be 16 years old, the aircraft must weigh less than 55 pounds, must contact John Wayne Tower and receive approval for flight, must fly during the day, must not fly over non-participating parties. Non-participating parties is anybody not associated with the drone flight, so almost everybody excluding the pilot of the drone would be a non-participating party.
Excuse me for one moment. So flying for fun has no aircraft requirements?
That's essentially correct. There are requirements, there's FAA regulations that still govern that, but there is not, there are no requirements. If you look in the packet that I passed out to you, there is a, addressing the aircraft, the, addressing commercial flight, there is a, not the pamphlet, but the USA's UAS, it's the photocopy of the license, and I'll hold it up here so you can see this, should have been in the packet I gave you, too. So for commercial flight, you have to possess one of these certificates, and this is actually Tom Incheff's certificate to my right, we've also redacted, obviously redacted his information on it, but he actually obtained his certificate for commercial flight under Part 107, and that's what this represents. But for the recreational pilot, he does not have to possess this certificate, he can basically go buy the drone from his big box store and technically can fly it. Now, there's, as I move through this presentation, you'll see that there are some restrictions in Newport Beach that differ from other cities, and I'll address that as I move on.
Thank you.
FAA rules and regulations, the methods for operating a small UAS, a drone, for commercial use in the national airspace, basically fall under these three categories. The first one I'll talk about is Part 107. It was created and implemented in the summer of 2016 in response to the prevalence of cheap, easy drones. Part 107 was designed to include both commercial and recreational flight in its regulations. It is the current regulation that new drone flight will be facilitated under. The rule is designated to be simple and efficient, excuse me, designed to be simple and efficient. It is primarily administered through the FAA website. Any type of flight that is not allowed under Part 107 may be allowed with the approval of a waiver of operations. Examples of activities that can be flown under a waiver are flying over a public beach, which would be non-participating parties, because that would be people, again, not associated with the flight, and flying at night, and those are just two examples. I'm not going to, I'm not going to really go over the legacy regulations, but Part 333 that you see, and the public certificate of authorization, those are legacy, basically the legacy regulations. Part 107 is the newest and basically prevailing document as far as the regulations go. So, we'll talk about federal airspace regulations a little. You're going to see a graph up here, and it's a little confusing, but I think it does represent the four types of airspace that we deal with, and if you just focus on that, we have four types up there listed, Class G, Class B, Class C, and Class D. Those are basically your four types of airspace that the FAA regulates. They govern all the airspace in the national airspace system. The physical limits of specific airspace... system. The physical limits of specific airspace are best described as an upside-down cake is illustrated in a diagram. Different classes of airspace have different reporting and clearance requirements. It is the responsibility of either a commercial or recreational pilot to understand and abide by any airspace requirements. The FAA is solely responsible for enforcing and charging any pilot with an airspace violation. The Police Department is unable to enforce any FAA regulation unless explicitly directed by the FAA or FBI. So we're going to talk about the city of Newport Beach airspace. All of the city, except for a few small coastal areas, which we'll talk about in a minute, is contained in the surface layer of John Wayne Airport Class C airspace. And if you go back to the previous slide, that is the second most restrictive type of airspace that we have, because obviously we fall within a five-mile radius of John Wayne Airport. All pilots must have prior tower approval before flying any of the, in any of the Class C airspace. So that would cover both your commercial pilots and your recreational pilots. Need to notify the tower upon any drone flight. That differs from other cities, including our bordering cities, that don't fall within that five-mile radius in that Class C airspace. The process for seeking approval involves contacting the tower and providing the date, the time, the location, the desired altitude of the flight, and contact information for the pilot. And again, both the recreational pilot and the commercial pilot. If the flight is for commercial purposes, John Wayne Airport will require an existing Part 107 waiver for any commercial flight in the John Wayne Airport Class C airspace, and a valid commercial UAS airman certificate. And I'll refer back to this that was included in your packets. That is a valid UAS airman certificate. So the map that you see, the picture of our city with John Wayne Airport Class C airspace superimposed on top of it, this information is from professional pilot software called ForeFlight, excuse me, and has location-specific, accurate charts, so that we know which areas are in the John Wayne Airport Class C and which are not. The large circle denoting the surface Class C is a five-mile radius extending out from John Wayne Airport. This slide depicts one of the few areas not wholly contained within that John Wayne Airport surface Class C airspace. Drone flight is allowed without prior tower approval, so this differs a little from all of that Class C airspace. It's allowed without prior tower approval outside of the Magenta Line, but is highly discouraged due to the high volume of low-flying aircraft in what is known as the VFR coastal route. For example, during the summer months, we have banner towing aircraft, US Coast Guard are operating in the area, and law enforcement aircraft. All operate in this area, and they do operate at a, at a low ceiling. And if you look, basically, the two areas on the slide that are outside of the Magenta area is that Newport Beach pier area at the peninsula, and then the border between the city of Newport Beach and the city of Huntington Beach, that little sliver next to the River Jettie. This image depicts the southernmost area of the, of the surface John Wayne Airport Class C airspace. And again, even though drone flight in this area is also allowed without prior tower approval, approval is highly discouraged due to that VFR coastal route that I mentioned in the previous slide. So we'll talk a little bit about current state law, and I'll give you a little story at the end of this slide, too. This actually came into play, involved myself and Mr. Incheff sitting next to me. California currently has one state statute that Newport Beach officers can enforce, 402 Part A, Sections 1 and 2. If an officer sees a drone over, or interfering with an emergency incident, they are lawfully able to arrest the pilot if they can locate the pilot. And obviously, that's a big challenge. Sometimes locating the pilot is, is the biggest challenge of all. The story I have is, if you remember, we had the joint EOC drill between, at Cronod del Mar, State Beach, Main Beach, between the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Coast Guard. And I believe it was in 2016. During that operation, we had a drone pilot with, I believe, three drones is what we counted, who had those drones up over the operation. And actually, they prevented the Coast Guard helicopters from entering the area because of the drone flight. That actually fell under this current state law. Tom and I were in the area just watching the operation. Again, I was assigned to Support Services at the time, so I was just there just to watch the operation, but we located the pilot up on the bluff. We made contact with the pilot, and he had sought tower approval for the flight. I believe he had all of his certification, but he was in violation of this law. And we talked to him about it. We educated him on it. He landed all the drones, and we kind of went on our merry way. But that, that is one instance where this came into play, right here in the city of Newport Beach.
Is there a section here that says you can use a shotgun on these things?
Yeah, with a rock salt, yeah, you can shoot them down. No, I'm kidding. By the way, the drone up there, just, there's no battery in it, and it can't be operated, so we won't be taken off during the presentation. So we're all, we're all safe. The city Newport Beach municipal code. There are, this, there are probably instances where this could apply. That's why I included it in the presentation. So Newport Beach Municipal Code 5.46.010, and I'll read it. "No person shall use any property zoned or utilized for a residential use, public property, or public facility for the purpose of staging, shooting, making, capturing, taking, or recording of images for any commercial or business purpose without first applying for and receiving a permit from the city manager or film liaison." I do know of at least two instances where people have applied through the city for a permit for filming using a drone. So this has happened already. People have, have actually applied for a permit using the camera on the drone for photography.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. So if somebody was trying to, you know, put together a little video for a sale of a house, and it's in this Magenta zone, so he's got to get tower clearance, because he's a commercial pilot by the fact he's getting paid.
Correct.
He's got to get tower clearance, and then according to our municipal code, he's got to get city manager approval because he's filming.
Well, I'll defer that one to the city attorney.
So yeah, this is kind of stealing my thunder a little bit, but the FAA has opined on what is, in its opinion, okay and not okay. And the one area that they've left open to potential city regulation is land use regulations of drones. The first one that comes to mind is regulating where they can launch and land. So to the extent the city's municipal code is considered a use of the land, it, it, it is potentially enforceable by the city. There is no case law on this point. If that is construed to be an operational guideline on how you can use navigable airspace, then the indications are that it might be preempted. The FAA has given a consultation process that says any city that, if you want to run by your ordinance bias, for us to give you an opinion on whether we think it's preempted, they certainly will do that. But they have indicated a potential land use could be something that could work. There is, however, no cases out there. There is one case ruling on drones. It came out about three weeks ago. It involved the city of Newton, Massachusetts, so it's not in our district. It's not binding authority on us. But it only dealt with the issues of registration, and flying beyond the visual line of sight, and banning the flight of drones. And the court struck those down as operational guidelines that were preempted. So this land use issue has not yet become, come before the court. It might be some things the city could do, and there is this consultation process with the FAA. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
You didn't answer my question. The real estate guy, he's flying it. It's commercial. We have a requirement saying that he needs to permit from the city manager for filming. Would he be required to get a city manager permit?
Yeah, so you'd need a permit if you're going to do commercial filming.
And we've had two requests. I've seen a whole lot more than just two on the internet for various homes, so is this a process that's easy? Is there guidelines or anything we've established, or a set fee?
There is a set fee. I think that the Finance Department has basically referred all those permits out for commercial filming. So it's being handled, it's being outsourced at this time. I'm sure, if Dan's still here, I'm sure he can clarify. I guess he's not.
We treat it thus far through the film liaison process, but I, it could be argued that we need to simplify that if someone is indeed just doing a real estate view of a home. That seems like completely different from a one-week movie shoot.
Right.
Thanks. The next slide, you're going to see criminal laws applicable to drone operations. And I'll just briefly read the laws. I'm not going to go into the details of the laws, but we do believe in some instances, these laws could be applicable to drone usage. I'm not aware of any cases that have been prosecuted under these laws, but just looking at the laws, I can see instances where they may be applicable, and I'll read those. Penal Code Section 632, eavesdropping invasion of privacy. Penal Code Section 634, trespass invasion of privacy. Penal Code Section 647, disorderly conduct concealed recording. And then Penal Code Section 646.9, stalking.
Officer, please stay on this slide for a moment.
Yes, sir.
So in addition to a situation where they're interfering with some sort of public safety operations or practice, all of these sections of the penal code allow you to request a person put the drone on the ground and actually use physical force, correct? It's, it's a penal code. It's not, it's not a fraction.
The problem is the probable cause in getting there. I, I, yes and no.
I understand, but if you see-
It would depend on the circumstances.
Yes. If you see the commission of a crime or alleged crime or suspected crime in your presence, you are allowed to use force, correct?
As far as landing the drone force, potentially, we could, potentially, we could ask the pilot to land the drone, yes.
You may detain the individual, do a Terry stop, obtain the evidence, being the drone itself, and question the individual, correct?
Correct.
And further, how would you define trespass, well, not further, how would you define trespass under this penal code if you were looking to enforce it or suspected there was trespass involved? Would you consider it to be the property line immediately above it? How would you determine that?
So as we move forward, actually, we talk about this, this a little bit more. The investigation would be almost consistent with any investigation we would do on any other type of crime. I mean, the officer would approach it the same way. And to answer your question, I think, yes, we would have to probably use an extension of that property line upwards, but we would probably need the film card and some of the information from the drone. That would probably be, require a search warrant. So, I mean, it gets more extensive than just-
Search warrant would be required if the commission, if the crime was not committed in your presence, or there was not urgency.
Well, there is. If it's a misdemeanor, we would have to look to, obviously, a private person's arrest in that situation, too.
Okay.
So, and the private person's arrest is, is probably viable.
Okay. And the reason why I'm trying to get to this is because many of the tools that we have, although the department and the culture may not be willing or excited to enforce them at this time, given that it's a new technology, and it sort of seems like, it can be extreme, and you don't necessarily know if someone has nefarious motives, a lot of these tools are already present, I would argue.
And the card that I, that I've also, and I'll jump ahead, this was at the end of the presentation, but the card that I also gave you within your, I know there's a lot of information on that card, but this is the card that is going to be disseminated at the Police Department to our officers. We also are, within the next month to two months, are going to provide in-house training to our police officers. Myself and Tom are going to provide the training. And we are going to go over how to basically thoroughly conduct a drone investigation, involving, obviously, the state law, these penal codes, and just what to do. And a lot of that is, what do you do with the investigation? Where does the investigation go? Does it go to the FAA? Is it a penal code? But we are going to cover that training within the Police Department. And, and you're right, it's the Wild, Wild West with drones, because the technology has been fast and furious, and the laws, I don't believe, have kept up with the technology. So that's where we're at.
I think Councilwoman Dix has a question as well.
Have you gone through your presentation? Have you completed your presentation? I guess I've been waiting to see the incidents of drone sightings or issues that we currently have in the community. Could you comment on them?
I'm not quite done. I have a few more slides.
Okay.
But I, to answer your question-
Oh, yes.
I do have an answer to that. Through 2016 and 2000, currently through 2017, 85, we have 85 cat events involving drones.
Eighty-five, pardon me, what?
Cat events that have basically been entered into the computer, computer, have been dispatched with the Police Department. So 85 of those events, cat events, involving drones. That doesn't mean it was necessarily a harassment or unauthorized flyer of a drone. It just means we've had 85 cat events involving drones.
Is there, can you characterize, are the incidents growing with time? Are they, is it increasingly becoming a problem?
I honestly, I couldn't tell you that without looking at the dates of the calls, and if we've actually experienced a rise in those calls. It's something that I could get back to you on with a little bit of research.
Okay, thank you.
So local, local regulations, and how other cities are dealing with drones. I'm going to address two, while there are many throughout the nation that are addressing this issue, but I'll just cover the two that are closest to us, the city of Laguna Beach and the city of Irvine. And again, you're going to have to, pardon me, I'm going to read a summarized municipal code, the summarized municipal code from the city of Laguna Beach. And the highlights of this ordinance are, cannot be operated in a reckless manner which endangers life property of another. Cannot capture, record, or transmit any visual image or audio recording of any person or private property located in the city under circumstances in which the person has a reasonable expectation of privacy, including but not limited to inside a residence, private office, or inside a hotel room. Cannot operate a drone in a manner which harasses, stalks, annoys, disturbs, frightens, intimidates, injures, threatens, victimizes, or places mental distress upon another. Cannot operate a drone in the airspace over Heisler Park, Main Beach, and I'll stop there. Basically, it lists their parks and their beaches. And then cannot interfere with the operation or support of emergency services. And if you look at this, it does mirror the FAA regulations, and that last one is actually the state law about emergency operations. That's the city of Laguna Beach's ordinance. The city of Irvine requires any flights to conform with FAA regulations, and requires any commercial operators to have a city business license. The city is also looking at creating an ordinance for regulating drones. The distinction, the difference between Laguna and Irvine and the city of Newport Beach, we fall back to that airspace. Almost all of the city of Newport Beach falls under that Class C airspace or Class Charlie airspace. About 50% of Irvine falls under that Class C airspace, and none of Laguna Beach falls under that Class C airspace. So in a way, we are more restrictive under the FAA regulations here in Newport Beach, because we do fall under that second most restrictive layer of airspace. The FAA and the role of law enforcement. So law enforcement officials and first responders and others can provide invaluable assistance to the FAA, help deter unsafe USA operations by taking the actions outlined below. The six points were taken directly from the FAA Law Enforcement Guide for Suspected Unauthorized USA Operations, and that is the, also included in the packet that I provided you. And that was actually published August 11, 2016, so it is pretty current. And those, those six bullet points, witness identification and interviews, identification of operations, viewing and recording the location of event, identifying sensitive locations, events, or activities, notification and evidence collection are actually listed in that that was provided by the FAA. And what's funny is about, well, not funny about that, but that almost mirrors how we would conduct an investigation on any other type of crime anyway. So it's very consistent with how we would approach any other crime. So I kind of, I kind of already hit what we're doing at the Police Department, and the training that's forthcoming involving our officers, and what we're going to provide our officers with to address these, these drone concerns within our city. At this point, I'll open it up for questions or comments on these topics that we discussed today.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the daisies this time? Go to the public, and then I'll have some public comments on the side, and please come forward. Please state your name for the record. Yes?
Hi, I'm Erica Lowe. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make some comments today. I have called the Police Department a few times relating to drones flying directly over my residence, and I have to say that these things are a complete nuisance. They are an invasion of privacy. You can be sitting outside, and, you know, you can hear these things directly right over you. I've seen them on numerous occasions, sometimes multiple, three, four at a time. And I think they're also a major safety issue. I've actually seen them fall from the top or from, from very high buildings around the area here, and they come crashing to the ground. So if they fall on private property, if they fall on an individual, if they fall on a car, there's a really big safety issue there. And I will say also, speaking of privacy, I mean, it seems to me that this is a direct, a real affront to all of our individual rights. And I really feel that we, as citizens of Newport Beach, have a right to our privacy, a right not to have a drone or a camera peering into our, into our bedrooms or into our private areas in our backyards. our backyards. And, you know, I think it's also, if there have been eighty-five calls about this over the last couple of years, to me, that says that there's also a poor utilization of police resources, that they have to follow this. So I really liked what the city of Laguna Beach put together in their ordinance that just made it basically not legal to fly these things over private property and certainly over very highly concentrated areas of pedestrians, of shopping areas, of main streets. These things should not be permitted to be flying overhead for any recreational purposes whatsoever. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions on that, but, you know, for the last two years, I moved closer to the water two years ago, and I can tell you that there have been so many times that I will go up and look for the flyer of the drone. I'll say, "By the way, you're flying your drone over private property." And they'll say, "Well, I have every right to do that." And I'll say, "Well, actually, you're trespassing." And they'll, you know, they'll say, "We'll call the police." I call the police. The police come. The guy's already left, or, you know, they're like, "Well, file a complaint with the city," which is what I did. So again, I'd really like to thank everybody for listening, and I'd really like to suggest that the entire drone use from a recreational standpoint in the city be banned. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. First, I would like to thank the city attorney for recognizing that whenever somebody from our own government agency provides material for you that's part of the presentation that needs to be made available to the public, and ideally, this would have been out in the lobby for everybody to see. I have a copy of it, so at least I can follow along with what you're doing. I can relate to you a recent drone experience I had, which is this last Friday, there was a meeting in East Bluff, a public meeting about the John Wayne Airport. After that meeting, I stopped by the Newport Dunes, which is a county park, to visit Noise Monitor Station 7, which is located there near the back Baby Stro, and kind of check out for myself the aircraft noise and the background noise that exists there. And the first noise I noticed all the time I was there, about a half hour, was a drone about the same size as this but a dark brown that was hovering around. I couldn't quite figure out what it was doing. Part of the time, it was paying attention to me, it looked like. Part of the time, just randomly going around the parking lot. My guess was that it might be part of the security system for the Newport Dunes, and I'm wondering if that was the case, if they're doing anything wrong spying on the people on the county beach there, if that is indeed a county beach, which raises the bigger question of whether the city itself is using or contemplating using drones for police or code enforcement activity, and if we have or should have any limits on that as to whether they should just be randomly going around, taking pictures of people's backyard, or what people are doing at the beach, or looking in hotel windows. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And if you have a intended comment, please come to opposing podiums. Yes?
Good afternoon. My name is Kelsey Burr, and I serve as the policy manager for the Association of California Cities, Orange County. I was asked to be here by Councilwoman Diane Dixon. The association took on the issue of drone policy back in November, and over the course of about four or five months, we developed a model drone ordinance that highlighted and touched on a lot of the issues that all of you talked about today. So issues of public safety, privacy, reckless behavior. What made our model drone ordinance at that time unique was that we were the first organization that partnered with the FAA to deal with the preemption issues preemptively. And the FAA was a part of our discussions. They were a part of our work group, and they told us at the end of our process, when our Board of Directors adopted our model ordinance, that it was the first ordinance that they saw that had successfully navigated preemption issues on all fronts. It's been currently adopted by nine different cities in Orange County and has also been used by cities in the state of Texas, Tennessee, and North Carolina to model their drone ordinances. So again, we're more than happy to assist you all in this process, but I wanted to just make a couple points based on both questions and some things that I heard, if you don't mind. Mayor, you pointed out the issue of generally applicable laws, and one of the reasons that our drone ordinance was considered to be a model by the FAA is because it didn't add additional regulatory schemes to what already existed. So that would definitely be our recommendation, is whatever generally applicable and neutral privacy, noise ordinance laws that you all have on the books or at the state level, that you simply educate your officers and your residents on how to apply those at the local level. Additionally, as a fair warning, anytime a city brings up the issue of drone regulation, they are often approached by private corporations who offer to help create a registration system for you to map and figure out where all of these are at. And while the association hasn't taken a position on that, we wrote our drone ordinance so that none of you would have to purchase any additional technology in order to enforce it. The FAA also told us that you have to be careful when requiring secondary registration as part of your local ordinance because it can be perceived as a preemption issue because it creates a secondary regulation framework. And then finally, the enforcement piece of it, I think, is where there's a lot of struggle with all of our cities, both the ones that have adopted our ordinance and the ones that haven't, have taken a lot of different kind of perspectives on how best to go about it. The one thing that I will caution is that while I absolutely do suggest working with the FAA in order to enforce their own regulations, you have to be wary of the fact that they have taken the model of education first without necessary penalties. In the state of California, in 2016 alone, there was over thirty thousand violations reported in Southern California alone. The FAA followed up on thirty of those cases, and in only two of them were there actually any penalties leveled against those who had violated against it. So, sorry. I apologize if I run out of time.
Okay.
So in conclusion, what I would just, again, is offer the association to all of you as a resource. I'll be sitting here and happy to answer any questions about our process that we went through. But again, tie it to land use authority. Do not create any operational bans, and you should be okay. Thank you.
Excellent analysis. Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, bringing it back. I think... I don't know there's a desire. Say, Councilman Piotr wants to speak on the issue. Before I yield the time to him, would you mind putting the penal codes back up? I think you went too much, too many. It's okay. So almost all of these were basically echoed, in my opinion, Laguna Beach ordinance. And we have the issue of not having preemptive control over the airspace per the FAA. So I actually... it's my opinion this time that there is no need for us to even pass an ordinance. We can take the model ordinance provided by ACCOC, do an analysis based on the current laws in place already, see if that's enough to offer our police force the enforcement that you think is desirable. I think, at the end of the day, enforcement's going to be an issue because the suspect or individual, whether they committed a crime, whether they are being innocent, will likely be gone from the location already. It is hard to prove... it could be hard to prove trespass, but maybe perhaps it's a bright line rule. We have one witness say it crossed my property line. That's all you need. But in many cases, it's just going to be an educational opportunity to tell the person who just bought their cool new drone, they can't fly it that way. I mean, for a lot of individuals, that's what it is. It's a toy. So I'd prefer to see a memo brought back on this item, and if we have the tools already in place with existing legislation and ordinances, to see if we can move forward with the enforcement mechanism that's agreeable to the police department. I'm also hesitant to regulate a new industry. They're saying eventually Amazon's going to be delivering via drones, and perhaps we'll all be flying a drone. Apparently, you can fly any drone you want if it's for fun. So that's news to me. So I'm just not sure that we should be in a rush to regulate further what we already have. Councilman Piotr?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Dixon and I asked for this thing to be brought forward. I would love to be able to go the way that Mr. Muldoon is suggesting, that under existing laws, that we're okay, and just by training our officers, that we'd be able to regulate them. I think it's, you know, most of these guys who get their nice new shiny drone for their birthday gift, they sit there and go, "Oh, let's go to Corona del Mar and fly it off the cliff." They're flying over private property lots of times, and they're flying within the five-mile zone of the airport, and they're totally unaware that that's an issue or a problem. I am... if we don't need to pass an ordinance to accomplish our enforcement, that's great. If we do need to clarify, that's great. If we just need to sign a couple of areas a little bit better so that the newbies know what they need to do, maybe even giving them a number of the tower over John Wayne, you know, that we can get compliance. This is the one aspect, I know, don't quote me on this, this is the one aspect where the airport helps us in keeping down drone use. They will actually regulate them in our city. So although I don't need an extra regulation, I do like the idea of, you know, I've gone back in emails, back and forth with Erica, there is a problem. There is a violation of privacy, and right now, our officer's not equipped to handle it, and nor can we get out there fast enough to really, you know, enforce it. And like you suggested, probably most of the time, education of the drone operators is what we need to do. So, you know, properly signing and doing some other things and providing some additional information out there may be enough to get compliance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil?
Real quick, I'll use Councilman Hurdman's favorite word and say that this is a complete mess of a legal situation. And it's a second... it's a second study session in a row where we're dealing with the FAA preempting our decisions and ability to make, you know, illegal what is essentially virtual peeping toms. And that's not okay. And so the problem we've got, though, is that the FAA is actually even... I don't think the FAA actually understands what its own rules are and preemption issues are. And that's the major problem because to Andrew's point, the FAA just came in and preempted Newton, and they're going to do the same thing in cities around. And by the way, to the point about trying to get rid of all of the residential drones, let's see, it's made... five months ago, the federal court threw out a registration requirement that the FAA had passed because it said that the Congress had actually created a law that doesn't allow the FAA to even regulate unmanned recreational vehicles. So the question is what airplanes, or however they phrased it. But so the FAA doesn't understand what its role is in this, but it's coming in and telling people that it controls it. Then the state comes in and says, "Well, we control the airspace as well." And then now cities are left with land use issues, which is barely code enforcement at that point. And so I'm just going to say, I am really sorry to the residents that are getting harassed by this. And until Congress and the FAA figure out exactly what their roles are, the best we can do is send out our police officers to try to enforce what is essentially, you know, pre-technological penal codes. But by all means, please, please do.
Well, the beauty of common laws and old laws, they apply to human nature regardless of the technology. So we're finding a way to prove that to be true with these new crimes just implemented with different tools. Councilman Dixon?
Yes, thank you. In fact, I noticed on that original California penal code, was it 1870 or something? So whatever was looking for public nuisance and safety, I guess, no good ideas in 1870. Well, I concur with what the sense of the conversation is. Where I land, no pun intended frankly, is how we protect the privacy of our residents. And if Amazon starts to deliver, I guess that would come under the category of commercial activities. So that will be permitted, licensed, regulated accordingly, I would hope. But because you identified a circle of influence outside that circle, it's largely in my... happens to be in my council district, I share that concern, and I fully support what is the current laws. And I don't think we need new regulations. It's really about having the necessary resources or directives to enforce these laws. Most importantly for me, it's a simple matter, is that the residents know where they can go to get answers and not be given a runaround, and the person's gone, and whatever. Communication's going to be critical, awareness, enforcement, and working with ACCOC. Thank you, Kelsey, for being here. She has been called by many cities in Orange County, the drone lady, because she's so familiar with... she is a tremendous source of information for us. So I would recommend, Mayor, if you will, even though there's not necessarily action, as much as I would like a memo, as you describe it, to describe what we can do, what could be done within the existing regulations and state laws that exist that we can protect our citizens. So I would like that to come back for discussion, and maybe it's bringing together all the existing ordinances and penal codes into a single document that identifies the drone regulations for the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Percham Duffield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just... I know my son would be upset if I didn't bring this up, but he is a commercial helicopter pilot, and when I fly with him, he is absolutely paranoid of these drones. And he... we have the same drone right there that he flies. But I will... I just want to reiterate to the dais members up here that private aircraft and small helicopters are made paper thin. They were not engineered to hit anything, okay? So that horrible incident, if it should ever happen to us in our great city, would be just devastating. And he has, you know, for example, when I get in the helicopter with him, if I have a camera in the door... sometimes we don't have a door. We take pictures. He says, "If that camera fell out of my hands, and it would go back into the rotor, we're done for." So it doesn't take much. And that is a lethal weapon to a small aircraft. And I think we should all be aware that with our helicopters that fly around for police enforcement, especially police enforcement helicopters and such, it is an issue, not just for peeping toms, but for aircraft as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, staff. Look forward to hearing more about this topic. Let's continue the next item and have a... we'll continue study session item four, Pennsylvania Crosswalk Study Session. Do I need to vote for that, Ms. Sharp, to continue it, or do I just... no? And any public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think a couple people were in the audience for the Peninsula Crosswalk one. That doesn't mean not to do it, but just, we will be... you'll be... you could talk about it again briefly at the seven o'clock session because it's on the consent calendar.
Okay. So what happened was these items went over, and we have to go close session, deal with some legal issues from about six till seven, and it's encroaching on that time. Some of these issues are timely, and they involve serious financial issues. So unfortunately, we have to continue the crosswalk issue the next meeting, two Tuesdays from now. You can make comment now about it anyways, though, if you would like, or you may comment at 7:00 PM. Okay, you're welcome to comment now on a non-agenda item, or you can comment at seven o'clock meeting. Either's fine. So please just come forward and state your name for the record. Anyone else who wishes to speak, please approach the podium as well.
Good evening. My name is Max Johnson. I'm the current ASP president in Corona del Mar High School. I just came up to talk about a few issues that the school had with the proposal, not really issues, but just concerns. And one of them was with the community around us, and I just wanted to talk about how the community and the school have been interacting in that there's been a great compromise between the school and the community. And I believe that the school has worked with the community very well in reaching an agreement, and I just wanted to talk about that agreement, which was Proposal B in the current EIR that's been proposed. And in the EIR, our school has seen many changes. I've been going to Corona High School since... in middle school since seventh grade, and since then, there's been, I think, three proposals about the field currently. And in the first proposal, we were going to get a full stadium, just like Davidson Field at Harbor. I don't know if you guys know about Davidson Field. And now we're down to two fields with lights. And currently, the East Bluff community wants to get rid of the lights, do the light pollution. And I would just like to bring up the point about the current lights at the pool and the tennis courts pollute much more lights than the proposed lights because they're modern... the new lights are modern. And the current lights at the pool will be turned off at 10:00 PM. And the lights in the proposal will be turned off at 8:00 PM. So I was just trying to bring up some awareness in the point that Corona del Mar High School is really trying to work with the community and trying to work with everyone in the surrounding area in order to bring togetherness in this, so that... we're trying to work with them. And 8:00 PM is a pretty early cutoff zone. And our students are trying to drive throughout the whole community to go to practices. They practice in the Bluffs practice, and they practice in the East Bluff community by East Bluff Elementary. And having all the students on campus for practices would just be amazing for our school because being able to have everyone on campus means students driving less in and out of the community, and turning lights off early means that students are able to go home with... able to go home with their families early. But when students are driving all around the city, and first of all, that's endangering, I think, more students, because we're young drivers, you know, young drivers have more accidents, that's just fact. And coming in and out of like, the school is pretty, we do that every day, so I think that's easier. And driving in and out of the community less would mean that we have less problems. So, that was just all I wanted to talk about, and how the students really want to work with the city, and work with the school, and work with the community, and making sure that this field passes, because I entered CDM, like I said, in seventh grade. And I'm a senior now, I'm ASP president now, and this still is in the same EIR proposal area that it was six years ago. And so, just being able to get this passed with some lights for our students to practice every day in, and be able to work as a community in order to get this passed would be, really be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. State your name for the record. No, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Hello. My name is Jake Saboda. I am also a senior at Corona Del Mar High School, and I've been on track and field and across country team for four years. Again, I just want to talk, like, reiterate what Max said about to promote my support for the Compromise B in the draft EIR for the CDM field proposal. I know that the surrounding community has taken, or is at odds with a lot of portions of it, but we feel at CDM that we've made, that both sides have made significant compromises, and both sides can get what they want. So, Proposal B is that compromise that will get both sides to agree. And Proposal B simply is the renovation of two of our CDM fields to turf, the construction of field lights, and the addition of a portable PA system, while also renovating our track. This compromise would definitely address our lack of infrastructure compared to the other high schools in the district, compared like Estancia, Newport Harbor, even Costa Mesa. CDM is pretty much the only one that's left out right now. And we feel that it's our time that we should have a proper field. But we know that the, that the surrounding community has issues with the lights and the noise. And, but we feel that Proposal B will definitely solve that issue. I just want to emphasize the necessity of the lights being included in this proposal, though, because the lights is what really makes this proposal helpful for our school. Our school feels multiple varsity teams, as well as JV and Frost Off for multiple agendas. And every team pretty much practices at all times of the year. Most teams aren't practicing at, like, their season, and that's it. Every team is practicing all the time, because in order to stay good and on top of our game, we have to keep practicing. But that's kind of caused scheduling challenges. And all of our teams have not been able to practice at our school, especially during the winter and fall months, during daylight savings, when basically it becomes dark at like, five. And only a couple teams get to use the field, and everyone else has to find somewhere else to go. So, while I'm on track and cross country, and we don't have, we don't have that problem, I know many friends that have to go to like, other fields, East Bluff, I know Aurora Park has been one, and Bonita Canyon, I think. So, that is one of the reasons why we want Proposal B. And secondly, I just want to address that the residence problems regarding the lights is unfounded, because in the draft, in the EIR, the new lights will be placed a lot higher, and there'll be much less light pollution than the current pool and tennis courts. Residents, only the residents on like, the outer perimeter should see some light pollution, but otherwise, most of the light is focused on the field, and no one else should really be seeing it. And lastly, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Bridgette Cannelli, and I'm a junior at Corona Del Mar High School. I, I run cross country, track, and I used to play soccer. First, I'd like to thank everyone who's patiently listened to the constant, to the continuing argument regarding the facilities at the CDM. As a student athlete at CDM, Option B is an excellent compromise for the requests of both the neighbors and the athletes. Having turf fields will reduce the number of injuries our athletes suffer, and the lights will allow our teams to practice until 8:00 PM at CDM. The main concern in regards to this proposal seems to be the light pollution. The Environmental Impact Report, EIR, addresses this issue by presenting the evidence found while doing extensive research in order to appeal to the communities near CDM. The EIR demonstrates that the light pollution would be less than our tennis courts and pool currently give off. The lights would be turned off by 8:00 PM, and would be used so that our sports teams do not have to go off campus for practice. It would be such an amazing improvement that would positively impact the athletic teams using these facilities. All incoming grades will benefit immensely from these fields, the new track, and lights. As a junior, I will be unable to use these facilities, but I know the freshmen and incoming grades will enjoy these, using them in the future. These fields, the track, and the lights would reflect the pride of our school and its longstanding representation of dedication to athleticism and a commitment to quality of sportsmanship. The athletic teams are excited for the opportunity of having turf instead of grass, as well as the ability to practice at CDM. Option B proposal gives CDM students an area to practice that is equal to all the other schools in our district. These turf fields, the track, and the lights will impact our athletes, our teams, and the community positively, in order to reflect CDM's outstanding image and willingness to compromise with the community. And this is why I think we should pass Proposal B. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon and City Council members. My name is Alec List, and I'm currently a senior at Corona Del Mar High School. I'm a part of the water polo team and lacrosse team. And recently, with our water polo workout regimen, it got changed. So, now we run along the track for our warmup, before we start lifting weights. And while doing that, we, I've constantly seen the football team practicing. And it's extremely congested. Everyone's like, butt up next to each other, and it's really close. And I don't really feel like it provides the space for our football team to practice adequately. In addition, while we are running on the track, we often see cross-country runners for our track team, and members of just a normal track. And then there are currently public members, or people of the public who run on the track for exercise. I know my dad is one of those. And I know that, like, it's really important for all of us to have our field space, because just the way practices are, like, with our limited space, we have to prac, some teams have to practice well into the night, and that's limited by the lack of lights on other fields in our field, in our current field right now. And I'd just like to point out some examples for that. So, during the spring, I played lacrosse. And our lacrosse practices would start at about 4:30 or 5:00, and basically go until the sunset. And then we would stop when we would run out of light. And then after that, we would go out, off to the gym and work out and lift weights. And then, when we have our big major games like Battle of the Bear, practicing for CIF to represent our community, represent Newport Beach well, those games are often at night and played under lights. And that's something that our team doesn't really get to practice with. I know it seems very minute and small, but it's, it can make a difference. It can make a difference between a game, you know, being used to the artificial light in the dark, seeing a small white ball against bright light. And so, we find ourselves driving out to Estancia very often to practice underneath those same lights. And it's, I just don't really feel like it's fair to the students, for the team, for future CDM athletes. And I really think that Plan B compromises very well with all the issues that have been brought up between the community, the school. Although, for me personally, there's nothing been more exciting about the thought of a full football stadium going to every single home game, because it is so close. You know, just that whole sense of community aura. I mean, we live in the CDM community, and it's a lot easier for us to drive to that, to a local stadium. But Plan B, I think, suits everyone's needs. I mean, I know all the previous speakers have brought up the statement about the lights giving off less pollution. I don't know if it's been fully explained, so I was wondering if I could explain that, like, with a quick demonstration. So, the lights that are currently on, that are the old lights on the tennis courts and the pool, are relatively low to the ground, and therefore, they have a shallow angle. So, as you can see, this lights up, yes, it lights up the area that I need, but the light also travels in all of your directions. But what's being proposed in Plan B is that the lights are higher up and at a steeper angle. So, as you can see, the light pollution is a lot less, because you can see the light, but it's not blinding. So, I thought that was something that needed to be brought up. Thank you so much for your time, and I really appreciate it.
Excellent. Thanks for the explanation. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Harp?
Thank you very much, Mayor Muldoon. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to discuss items four, A through C, including meeting with the City Manager, Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager, Carol Jacobs, Human Resources Director, Barbara Salvini, and our outside counsel, Peter Brown, discuss labor negotiations with the unions listed under Agenda Item Number Four A, meeting with legal counsel to discuss anticipated litigation to be filed by the unions and individuals listed under Agenda Item Four B, that's related to the Flores matter. And finally, meeting with real property negotiator Simone Jurges and Lauren Woodding to instruct them as to price in terms of payment in regards to negotiations with Blue Water Grill for property at One Newport Pier. Thank you.
Thank you. We are at recess till the seven o'clock regular meeting. Call the meeting to order for the October 10th, 2017, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harper, is there a closed session report?
There's no closed session report this evening. However, item four C, which was related to real property negotiations in the Newport Pier, that'll be continued till the end of the meeting, because we don't have a chance to address it.
Excellent. Thank you. At this time, as we're doing invocation first, please stand. First, I respectfully request that we observe a moment of silence for those victims in the Las Vegas shootings, and we keep also in our hearts and prayers those who are dealing with fires in our own county. In further invocation, I thought I would use a prayer that was reportedly said by Christopher Columbus and his crew, after a very tumultuous journey across the ocean. And it goes like this, "O Lord, Almighty and everlasting God, by the holy word Thou hast created the heavens and the earth and the sea. Blessed and glorified be Thy name, and praised by Thy majesty, which hast designed to us, Thy humble servants, that Thy name may be proclaimed in this second part of the earth. Amen." And please remain standing for Will O'Neil, who will lead us into pledge.
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands.
Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. City Council announcements, these are non-discussion items. And new items, council members like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real briefly, I was able to attend the Newport Mesa State of the Schools address, which was fantastic. The Corona Del Mar Sandcastle Contest, I was there before the judging. I'm sure the mayor did a phenomenal job doing that. I was able to attend a lecture over at the library for Walter Starr's new book, named, which, actually, a sizable portion of our library is named after his parents. The Crystal Cove Soiree, Crystal Cove Conservancy is the group that is in charge of the Crystal Cove cottages and education purposes, and they had a, their annual gala, which was well-attended. Quick reminder, Newport Beach Art in the Park is on October 14th. And then one last thing, Councilman Hurdman and I were able to attend the, the Mayor's Youth Council. Was that last night? That was last night. And the debate that was had by the students for the five-person council was the CDM Sports Complex. One person from Corona Del Mar, two people from Sage Hill, and two people from Newport Harbor, and they voted against it four to one, at which point, the Corona Del Mar student stood up and said, "But none of them are from Corona Del Mar High School. Welcome to local politics."
Mr. Piattar, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Last weekend, many of you may have experienced or heard or read about flooding the Baboa Peninsula. There was some unusual confluence of wave and surf action that caused around A and B streets and on the peninsula to flood. But the good news is that the damage was minimal, maybe one garage, I think that we know about, had low-level flooding. And due to the swift action of our municipal operations team, opened up the closed storm drains that go through our seasonal adjustment, and the flooding dissipated within an hour. These kinds of weather conditions are, we prepare for with building up the berms on the beach, and the berms were, needed to be in a different location and, and to deal with some wave action that was coming from the south swell. But we got it under control, and I'm very appreciative of, of our municipal operations and water department. Speaking of activities, there was a fun Sister City Halloween pumpkin carving event with, jointly with the Japanese exchange students from our Sister City, Okasaki in Japan. And so, that was a fun event, and I was happy to be there. That was, that pumpkin carving event has been going on, this was the 34th year. It's an amazing tradition. Yes, the mayor and I and, who else was the judge? We were, Mr. Kiff. Yes. We were all, we were quite the judging team of a wonderful, another longstanding tradition, I think it was 56 years that we've had a, and the Newport Chamber and the Commodores have sponsored that. It's a wonderful community event that welcomes visitors from all over, and some of the contestants have participated for decades, and their family, they bring their and some of the contestants have participated for decades, and their family, they bring their families and neighbors. It's really quite fun. Some planning, for those of you who want to continue to enjoy knowing more about our city finances, our finance committee will be meeting at three P.M. in the Crystal Cove Conference Room Thursday afternoon. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
Having been out of the country for the last two weeks with my wife, we took a little, we took a little trip, but I did keep up to date via email on what was taking place in the city. I was very pleased to hear when I got back about the last council meeting, especially the study session that took place regarding John Wayne Airport, and last Friday at the airfare meeting about the action that our mayor Kevin Baldoun has planned to aggressively advocate for the community as far as noise and pollution created by the next-gen flight path. So was really pleased to hear the progress that's being planned for and made already on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
None.
Mayor Prostam Duffield.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Balboa Yacht Club for putting on a Clean the Harbor Day and picking up a lot of trash, what wasn't very well-participated, but we had a discussion on how we're going to run the future of the first storm. We're going to, and the Harbor Commission's working on this, to work on a way to gather all the trash and debris that is from the first rains that come in, rather than just let it naturally disperse out into the ocean. So that is going to be a great thing that we've never really done before with such an intensity. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prostam Duffield, and as Councilwoman Dixon said, she, Mr. Kiff, Marie Case, Dorothy Larson, and myself were judges in Sandcastle Contest, which has, which is growing and has been going on for quite some time, as she noted. It was a lot of fun and very excited to see families and kids involved with that tradition. I have no new items or requests to put on the future agenda. So now we're going to go to the next matter. These are matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. It's not a matter for discussion. It's merely to see if three council members would like to discuss these matters at a future date. Do we have three council members for discussing the first item, which is introduced by myself, seeking the assistance of federal advocacy or a federal advocate to work with the city on FAA and related aviation matters, including communication with major airline carriers? Show of hands. This looks like that.
Unanimous.
Much received, and I request that when that comes back with a staff report, it would be great if we could have it so that we have selections that can make a decision that night on who to go forward with. And then for the second item, this also was introduced by myself. Supporting additional review and verification of data accuracy from the county of Orange's seven noise monitoring stations on the JWA departure corridors. Okay, so we have support for that as well. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are Items one through thirteen. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. I need to announce that I live within five hundred feet of the property listed in Item twelve, the coastal development permit waiver, and will recuse myself and leave the dais if the item is pulled.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, any items to pull from the consent calendar, Items one through twelve, with thirteen, I believe, to be continued. Councilman O'Neill.
Number four.
Number four to pull?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Piattar. Councilwoman Dixon.
None.
Councilman Hurdman.
None.
Councilman Avery.
None.
Mayor Prostam Duffield.
I have none.
All right. I have none myself. Mayor Prostam Duffield, do you have a motion?
We have a couple of changes before Mr. Duffield goes. One is continuation of Item number thirteen for two weeks. That's the Balboa Peninsula crosswalk study, and then just acknowledging that you have a new document associated with Number ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Prostam Duffield, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move the balance of the consent calendars, Item ones through thirteen, with Items number four pulled by Councilman O'Neill, and Item number thirteen to be continued for next meeting, and acknowledgement of whatever the city manager.
The amendment to Item ten.
That. Sorry.
We have a motion, a second. Do we have public comments on the consent calendar?
I'll second the motion. We have two, was there a second already?
There was from.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes.
Mayor Maldoun and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't usually comment on this, but Item one on the consent calendar is the minutes of the last meeting. I usually offer some suggested changes to that. I do hope the council will consider amending the draft minutes to include the comment made by Alan Beek at the last meeting. I thought it was a good comment, and I have no idea why it was completely omitted from the minutes. I hope it will be in the revised minutes. Regarding the Item ten that you have a revised staff report about, this is a large-ticket item about the city planting trees and how much money we need to do, how much money we need for that purpose. This is an amendment to a contract that we have with Ameriposa Landscape Company. The original staff report had some kind of inscrutable numbers that you were being asked to approve. The new one has numbers that are also, at least for me, a bit hard to understand. From the cover page of the staff report, it's impossible for the public to tell exactly what you're being requested to do or how much increase it is. As near as I can make out, it's an increase of two million dollars over the current contract. And giving this company, which has not previously been in the process, in the business of planting parkway trees, specific directions for how to do that. I would first like to point out that in the city charter, the people of Newport Beach specifically asked our government that matters that have to do with parkway trees be reviewed by the PBNR Commission. They are supposed to be advising you about what should be done with parkway trees. I don't see any recommendation from them about this. I don't see how you're being advised. I am wondering where the money for this is coming from. I tried to look through the interactive budget of how much we have allocated for trees in the city. It seems to be one point three million dollars. I recall some years ago, we, the city council, increased the amount in some contract, which was going to be a new wave of tree planting, but from the reports that the PBNR Commission sees, we're not very active in that field. The typical report they see each month shows that we remove like fifty or sixty trees in a month, then we plant usually like twenty of them, not a, not a very active program. But anyway, the budget of one point three million in the last fiscal year seemed to be pretty much totally expended, and the staff report here says that there's money left in this to find another two million over the next four or five years. I'm not quite sure how much. The schedule of fees on the back, I don't understand. It seems to be showing a substantial increase for this year, but there's only two, two months and a couple of, a couple of weeks left in this year, so why are we increasing the budget for this year the same as we are for the next year? I just totally don't understand this item. Thank you.
Thank you. And their comments on the consent calendar, specific to those items we're continuing or voting on this evening.
Charles Griffin of Newport Beach, Balboa Island in East Buffalo. I wanted to speak on Item number thirteen, which is a matter which the council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, seeing, being involved with the Federal Aviation, city of FAA entity in the city, on the FAA. I'm a professional engineer, control system engineer, and developed the DC seven, the DC eight, the DC nine, the DC ten, the MD eighty, and the C seventeen.
Mr. Griffin, I believe that Item thirteen is pertaining to crosswalks. Do you have the item?
No, the item is dealing with the aviation city of FAA.
Roman thirteen.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that's a non-discussion item. It's already been voted on, so now.
I understand, I understand.
It's not an appropriate time to talk about that item. It'll be coming back at a future meeting, though, and you can.
Well, just.
At that time.
One sentence, one, one statement there, and I'll make another comment. I'm available to my council members, Charles Griffin, nine four nine, four two two, six three six nine, on aviation. Let's talk about another item. The item deals with Balboa Island and the seawall.
So that will be discussed at a regular public hearing. There'll be public comment for that as well. I'll signal to you if you'd like to comment on that. Thank you, sir. Any other comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for Item three, ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash sixteen, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, granting non-exclusive solid waste franchises to provide solid waste handling services within the city of Newport Beach. Council members Avery and Hurdman. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. Item four pulled by Councilman O'Neill. Mr. O'Neill, would you like a staff report on this?
No. I just had a few questions. Can I go? Oh, yes, okay. There were, I had a couple of questions about this. Honestly, I, I wasn't quite sure why we were, I, I'm not sure why it's on there, because this is, this is dealing with a, a group of city employees who have been operating, at least this, this group has been operating, operating for twelve years, I guess, and it seems like suddenly someone was concerned that they might have personal liability, and so they're, you're asking us now to handle an indemnification, increase with an indemnification provision for everyone who serves on there. Is that the only addition that's being asked? Is an indemnification of the, of the employees who serve on this benefit group?
Well, I think there's two pieces to the puzzle. I mean, the first one is some concerns were raised internally by some of the employees that were serving on the committee about whether they could be personally liable for the actions they're taking as government employees on this committee. And the resolution, in my personal opinion, doesn't really alter what the current state of the law is, that as long as they're acting in their professional capacity as government employees, there's already obligations under the code to identify and defend them. So I personally don't think that it's something that's necessary to be done, but there was some concern by those employees that were serving on it that they may not be, they may have personal liability associated with serving on the committee.
Yeah, I mean, we just spent months getting rid of duplicative language that is, you know, is in addition to what the law is already, and so if, to the extent we're just repeating ourselves here, it, repeating, not ourselves, repeating the, the state law to, I mean, it's almost like interpreting what the law is when that's clearly already been done. I, I just, I'm not quite sure I understand the, the approach. So, okay, so I wanted to make that clarification. Then the other one is, so we're, we're talking about a retirement, state health, health savings plan. Is this the same as the, the California Employers Retiree Medical Benefit Trust Fund that we had, that, that we were part of with Calpers, or is that a separate retiree fund?
In particular, as it pertains to this contract, it's just the administrative portion, the city's administrative or financial liability to pay for the RHS Record Keeper, in which case this is ICMACRC, that's the name of the firm, that is the plan record keeper for the city's RHS plan.
Is that, is that RHS plan different than the one I just?
No, no, it is not.
It's the same, it's the same thing.
Right, and so the, the component of that that's in question is, it's not the OPEB or retiree health plan cost that the city provides. It's just the administrative component of that that we're talking about here.
Yes, so it's the administrative portion of the.
Yes.
By the way, I apologize to the folks in the audience. I know this is really boring stuff, but there's actually, it's, there's a lot of money in this, so I need to make sure I understand where, what the trust administration is doing, so anyway. So when we're talking then about the, when we're talking about, we're talking about a group of employees who are doing essentially the advising to a, to the administrator of the plan trust.
Right, and what we're talking about is twenty-nine thousand dollar a year contract, so it's not the large number that's going to OPEB or that trust. It's just that administrative component of it.
Okay, and then I, you know, I'd also like to just point out real quickly. We are talking about the trust that is the one fifteen plan trust. And I just want to point out, we do have a Section one fifteen trust, and since Dave, you're the administrator of our advising group to the one fifteen trust. I, I just remember a year and a half ago, a council member, former council member, saying that using a one fifteen trust, and I'm going to quote him, was financially illiterate. And then I've also seen some other folks out in the community write op-eds where they reference the one fifteen trust as speculating in the stock market. Dave, I got to ask you, are you speculating in the stock market with our retiree health plan?
I don't believe it's speculative. I believe it's a competitive mutual fund-based investments that make sense to me, but I certainly respect what you've just said about.
And you would agree that using this one fifteen trust, or a one fifteen trust in general, is not, quote, financially illiterate?
No, it seems like a very appropriate use of this type of funds and this type of investment.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Hurdman.
May I direct a question there, Councilman O'Neill?
Really is, is not proper.
Okay.
Do you want to?
No, that's all right, that's all right. I'll just ask a question then as staff. Approval of this resolution, does it then become council policy?
No, it does not.
Okay. I understand what you were saying, Councilman O'Neill, as far as cleaning house on council policy. Yet here, are we creating here another duplicate type of policy that maybe isn't necessary? Correct?
It's not a policy.
Well, I know it's not a policy.
This would actually be a resolution.
Yeah.
Which is even more aggressive than a, it's more binding than a policy, so that's, that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay.
I do think that some of the members of, on the committee were nervous about this. I don't think it increases the city's exposure. I think it would give them peace of mind, but I do think it just basically copies what state law is on the first part. And then the second piece that I didn't get to was giving authority to Dave to basically take the actions he needs to under the plan, so there is, it's kind of a dual component to it.
Would it be possible to make two separate motions here? Split this into two separate motions?
There's been no motion made, so I think you could make a bifurcated motion. Yeah. Yeah, so if you would like, Councilman Hurdman.
All right. I don't know if I'm going to do this correctly or not, but I move that the resolution affirming the city's manager authority to administer and manage the city's employee deferred compensation health savings plan. I take that back. I'm going to start over. Okay. I move that the resolution affirming the city manager's authority to administer to, I'm not accomplishing what I want to accomplish here.
Councilman Hurdman, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
My suggestion would be if, if the intention of what you're about to do is to.
Separate the two.
Yeah, authorize the, reauthorize Mr. Kiff's role, but to take out the duplicative language about indemnification, that we continue the item with that direction of staff for the next meeting.
That'd be fine.
Okay, then I make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion to make Dave Kiff a day trader. It's been made with a second. Do we have any discussion on the dais before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none. Comments from the public, please come forward on this item.
Mayor Maldoun and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just want to clarify, in, in the resolution, Section one is giving the city manager very broad authority, it says, authorized to take any and all actions necessary to administer and manage the plans. As I understand, one of the plans has no public. As I understand, one of the plans has no public involvement at all, it's just totally city employee money. The second plan does involve taxpayer contributions to it that I think are detailed in this chart that it's the bottom here. I assume that this resolution does not mean the city manager's authority is so sweeping as if the plan needs help to change the formula. I assume that that, the plan itself, was adopted by the city council, and the amount that the taxpayers are putting in towards this health plan remains in control of the city manager, and it's not being turned over to the employees that it benefits. I assume that's the case. I think it could be clearer in the resolution that it is. Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none, back to the dais.
Ask your vote.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hurdman? Okay, thank you. With Councilmember Hurdman voting no, the motion carries six-one.
You did second that motion, right? I'm just clarifying this. We voted on continuing it.
Okay.
What did you vote on?
So just to clarify, Councilmember Hurdman, the vote was to continue the item, and you
are requesting to change your no vote to a yes vote, thereby the motion carries unanimously, seven-zero?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Adam Clerk.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Now, as a...Sir, Mr. Griffin, that's not your item, your item's going to come up after. This is simply public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward. These are items that are not regularly scheduled for discussion, but you're welcome to speak on them at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon and the city council members. My name is Diana Blasier, and I am a member of the Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth, or Newport Citizens for short. The focus of my comments tonight is the city's response to the proposed Corona Del Mar High School sports field project. In March of this year, in response to the first draft EIR, the city, and in particular Patrick Alford, Planning Program Manager, submitted an extensive number of comments. The March letter pointed out the lack of non-compliance with SEQA on numerous issues. Recently, the draft EIR was revised and recirculated. Mr. Alford submitted comments in response to the revised draft EIR. He pointed out that the revised draft EIR continues to have numerous deficiencies, and included his March letter as an attachment. The revised draft EIR continues to be inconsistent with SEQA and city's general plan in areas ranging from noise to adequate traffic and parking analyses. An accurate environmental analysis, including the above noted items, are among the issues that Newport Citizens has been and continues to be concerned about. In contrast to our concern about the inadequacy of the original and revised draft EIR, we want to take this opportunity to express to the council our appreciation of the thorough work of Mr. Alford and Mr. Brien, city traffic engineer. It is important for the draft EIR to be accurate and complete, so the decision makers can have a clear understanding of the environmental impacts of the proposed project. In two weeks from today, the Newport Mesa Unified School District will have a public hearing on this subject. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and if you intend on speaking on this item, please line up at opposing podiums. State your name for the record.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, city council members, and manager Dave Kiff. I'm Ron Rubino. I'm president of the East Bluff Homeowners Association. I'm joined here tonight with our association vice president, Don Slaughter, and many homeowners from our group. We represent 460 homes with approximately 1,500 residents and are located directly across Corona Del Mar and the sports fields on East Bluff Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to provide the city and the members of the community a short status report on our views on this proposed Corona Del Mar sports field project. Comments, as was just stated, on the reissued draft EIR have been submitted to the district, and we're awaiting the district's response. This is the third opportunity to respond to revised EIRs. The East Bluff Homeowners Association supports the improvements to the track field facilities to benefit athlete students. We have stated to the district that we support option B, including two artificial fields and all the all-weather track, but oppose inclusion of four 70-foot light poles and four 80-foot light poles, each with 14 high-powered fixtures on each pole. The two-field option was first proposed by the Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth, which was a consortium of East Bluff homeowner associations. This homeowners group produced a very good idea and proposed taking the money from the original project lights for a stadium and instead building two artificial fields. The school district liked the idea so much that they have now included in the revised plan. However, much to our disappointment, the school district is now proposing not only to build the two fields, but to include lights on both fields. We believe the two-field option without lights provides the desired additional fields for students without negatively impacting the quality of life for the homeowners who live around the school. This will come from view impairment, glare, evening sports activities generating noise, traffic, and parking problems. We have also asked the Newport School District and the City of Newport Beach to enter into a joint use agreement with surrounding HOAs to document the project's scope and authorized hours and the mitigation measures. The school district has agreed to some mitigation measures on a voluntary basis, including prohibiting varsity football games, limiting seating, limiting the days and hours of use, and not building a concession press stand, visitors restroom facility, and not including amplified sound system. We are also requesting that the facility not be used by other schools and city programs and outside groups, so it can be used to the maximum availability of the students. We feel that this policy direction should be stated in a binding use agreement that the district formally approves the conditions as a basis for approval of the project. We understand the decision is not the city's responsibility and is not in your jurisdiction. The sports fields and the hours of use, we will continue our discussion with the school district. We do encourage the city to continue its efforts in the EIR. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Muldoon, honorable council members, and city staff. My name is Susan Seager. I have lived in East Bluff for 25 years. I'm a member of NCRG. I'm concerned about the most recent proposal of the Newport Mesa School Board regarding the athletic field. The proposal presents two options, a single stadium with permanent lights and sound, or the alternative two-field option with double the lights and no regulated sound. There are many omissions and vagaries throughout the recirculated draft EIR, but the most significant occur in their statement of objectives. The first two objectives are not quantified. This will skew evaluations of all the field options presented. The first objective is to reduce travel time and vehicle miles traveled for home events and practices. How much travel time and how many vehicle miles are already expended transporting the CDM field athletes for home events and practices? In order to reduce something, you have to measure what you started with. Without this value, it is only a guess. What we do know, two synthetic turf fields block schedules and nighttime field use means more students will be required to return to campus even later for practice. Affluence and young drivers guarantee the majority of cars carry one athlete. If school lets out earlier and increased numbers of students must return to campus for practice and more events are scheduled on the fields, then it is fairly obvious that travel time and vehicle miles could significantly increase, and without question, event traffic will increase. The second objective is reduce the amount of district funds associated with transportation to and from off-campus events. Again, what is the baseline for this cost? How many trips is the district currently funding and at what cost? There will certainly be no reduction in transportation expenses for intra-district events. Whether CDM goes to another school or the other school comes to CDM, the district will still pay for it. So what are the savings? That answer requires information that is not included in the current recirculated draft EIR. The school board has to know where they started to understand what they might end up with. In the cases of these two objectives, there is inadequate information in the recirculated draft EIR data to say that any of these projects will meet these two goals. It's clear that the school board needs to go back to revisit their objectives to quantify them before they make a decision. Then the needs of the residents and students alike could be addressed and met. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before, a question from the dais, from Councilman Piotr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it may be addressed to everybody here, but these are really good comments, and you need to realize that we have no control over what's going on, that the people that are actually approving the EIR and responsible for the SEQA documentation is the school board. And so I would encourage you to make sure you attend their meetings and make the same comments to them. We love hearing your comments, but they're the official body there, not us. But that's why we've got staff attending and responding to the EIR, because we want to make sure that they comply with SEQA also. And so that's what we're trying to do from the city's perspective, but they are the final deciding bodies on that program and SEQA. But thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sue DeVorek, and I live in the Bluffs neighborhood in Newport Beach. My comments this evening are in response to the revised draft environmental impact report pertaining to the proposed Corona Del Mar High School stadium expansion project, which was recently released by the Newport Mesa School District. I'd like to read to you the opening paragraphs from a March 18, 2017, Daily Pilot article about a lacrosse match at Corona Del Mar High School. Quote, "Prior to the Corona Del Mar High boys lacrosse game, an old woman walked onto the field and made her way to the scorer's table. She asked those underneath the canopy where all the noise was coming from. Someone pointed toward the speakers behind the canopy. For a moment, the noise was turned off. The lady walked on the field again, talking to a couple of players before leaving the school." Sea Kings coach GW Mixx said he had seen the woman before, adding that she lives in the neighborhood and that she always complains about the noise. "Her house was shaking," Mixx said. "Mxxed" is what the woman told him. "I tried to tell her that it might have been an earthquake. She didn't want to hear it." "On Saturday afternoon, there was a lot of noise at CDM. Hundreds of fans came out to see CDM face Foothill. At the end, the Sea Kings were the ones who were the loudest," end quote. When Sea Kings coach GW Mixx told the woman that the noise shaking her house, quote, "might have been an earthquake," he's showing that he does not begin to understand the meaning of the good neighbor policy the district claims to endorse. At another game, another neighbor had to ask one of the coaches to refrain from playing, quote, "loud music with vulgar language." How many hours per day are the residents in the Bluffs, East Bluff, and surrounding neighborhoods expected to be inundated with this type of intrusive noise? The answer is up to 15 hours per day on weekends when the stadium will be open for business. I'd like to thank council for ensuring the district presents an accurate revised draft EIR and would like to point your attention to the following noise issue not adequately addressed in the revised draft EIR. The revised draft EIR eliminates the use of a permanent PA system under option A. It states that under option B, the school at times may use a portable loudspeaker system, and that the portable loudspeaker system is expected to be considerably quieter than the PA system under option A. However, the revised draft EIR failed to analyze the noise levels associated with the use of a portable loudspeaker system. The noise analysis must be reanalyzed to account for the use of a portable loudspeaker system. The Newport Mesa School District and Placeworks claim they cannot test the sound systems because they're portable and there are too many variables. It's unacceptable for sound systems to be unregulated in this stadium. It is the district's responsibility to test the amplified sound emanating from portable sound systems, report the results, and create limits and regulations for amplified sound at the stadium. The PA systems cannot be left unregulated and unmonitored. More teams will be practicing day and night at the stadium, resulting in a significant increase in noise. When you add in games and events at the stadium, the reality is unacceptable. We will be subjected to unregulated, unmonitored amplified sound for up to 15 hours a day unless the issue is addressed now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and city council, my name is Jim Carrigan, and I've lived in Newport Beach since 1960. Two years before CDM High School in the Bluffs, and even more years before our commercial airport, four kids grown and educated at CDM. Seven million dollars to Newport Beach today, that's really very little money, but it's not ours, it's the state's. That got me thinking, how little money would it take to disrupt the most people and not hurt them, and how? Explosives, noisy, cheap, but this is short-lived disruption. Bang, it's over. Light, annoying, inexpensive, that's long-lived. We're speaking about years and years. Once lights are there, they're easy to modify, easy to change at the times they're used. Once in place, there's no EIR to modify them. We individual residents don't do EIRs. We need, and hope, that's where the city can help residents. I'm asking for the city to apply your expertise and think out of the box about the next 25 or 50 years and protect us using the EIR process now. I'm asking for the city to...I'm sorry. Here are a few concerns, my concerns, out of a much larger list. How will night school activities impact quality of life to local residents? The lit fields become attractive to every elementary school in the district, not just Newport. How do lights change parking for people who live really close and now park on Vista Level Oro at night? How will this change traffic off-hours? We residents know and stay at home and avoid after-school traffic chaos at CDM and Our Lady Queen of Angels. What about unscheduled evening activity? The public facilities will be rented out, if not immediately, perhaps by court order in the future. Anyone can start a charitable organization. Fees for activities become donations. Facilities can be rented for a few dollars an hour, evenings, weekends. What polices these? What polices these activities? Who makes sure there's no alcohol? The city? School staff? How are parking rules that force at night? Will police prosecute trespassing parking in East Bluff and the Bluffs? They don't now. What is the economic impact to the city or our communities? Are night activities subject to permitting or control or limits set by the city? What happens when 8:00 signals light at band practice, or 9:00 or 10:00 or prep team practice? I could go on and on. Please help us by considering the EIR process our only protection. It is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Am I allowed to give something to the...
No.
Up front?
Can I enter it into the record?
You can answer, City Attorney, but please don't approach her well.
Well, I have actually seven. What I just handed out is an email I had sent to Ms. Yelsey of the, I believe is the president of the Newport Mesa Unified School District. I believe that the staff of the Newport Mesa Unified School District and possibly the board is not well-informed of all the aspects of this project, including the history of this project. What happened, the reason why I state that is I attended a public meeting at Corona Del Mar, at CDM High School on September 13, and wanted to bring up that this project has continually expanded from its original discussion of which was new football field and new track for the school, which I think the neighborhood would be supportive of, and it has constantly expanded. The biggest expansion has been the addition of the lights. Right now, East Bluff is a quiet neighborhood at night, and with these lights, we would have a lot of the noise that people have talked about now coming at nighttime. And I felt that that was a change to the original plan, which was just to give the school new fields and new track for the school. I was, at this meeting, I was told by the staff member that I was incorrect, that it always had included lights. I then, after the meeting, Ms. Yelsey came up to me and also told me I was incorrect. So I then told Ms. Yelsey I would send, I would look up, I recalled when this first project was presented approximately five years ago, that there was an article that talked about it and that it did not include any lights in it. So I then sent her this email, and another article that then happened about a year and a half later that talked about it, the lights being added as an augmentation to the original plan. And I believe that this is what's been happening, is this project is, keeps getting expanded, the school is not being a good neighbor to the neighborhood, they seem to have... They seem to have no consideration for the neighborhood. And I point that out as a gentleman earlier stated, that the community came together for support of two fields that was presented to the school board. And instead of maybe putting that as an option, they came back with that as an option, but with lights on both fields. So now, at the recommendation of the community, they now kind of backstabbed us and put lights on both fields where the community didn't want to have any lights. So I kind of lay that out in this email. I don't believe that the school is well-informed on this whole process, including, and I don't believe they are acting as a good neighbor regarding this project.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I will be taken to task if I do not thank the city and the staff for the outstanding response to the EIR that was prepared by the city. It was thoughtful, detailed, very, very impressive, so it is greatly, greatly appreciated. And I will be honest if I didn't say anything, so. My name is, good evening, Mayor Muldoon and distinguished council members and city staff and guests. My name is Paul Deremas, and I am privileged to be a member of the Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth. Not only am I a graduate of the Corona Del Mar High School, I have owned a home in the Bluffs for 42 years and have served a majority of those years as a board member of our association and or board president, and having worked very closely with the board of the East Bluff Apartment Association, a neighboring community of 242 apartment homes. More saliently, I am the son of a builder and developer of over 50 years. So I know my way around the processes of planning, design, construction, inclusive of, but not limited to, EIRs. Therefore, I know a trouble with EIR when I come across one. Which brings me to the sports field process. I would submit humbly that everyone in this room and on the council probably believes thoroughly in the age-old adage that a job worth doing is worth doing well. And to that end, we believe that it is reasonable for the immediate community surrounding the campus to expect the school district to exercise probity and rectitude during which each stage of the planning, design, construction, and use management of the eventual finished project. Now, with regards to the profound matter of lighting sources, I've been asked to speak to that tonight, if, God forbid, one or both of these fields are eventually lit. LED versus halide, which is currently the district's currently uninformed preferred choice. Considering this project is nearly four years old and this discussion stage only, in the last two and a half years alone, the progress in LEDs, lighting and its capabilities have been nothing short of astonishing. It is well-known throughout the industry that the rewards of choosing LED lighting system over halide is more than overwhelming. In study after study, halide loses out to LEDs in every single important category, including, but not limited to, environmentally sound and friendly, energy and system efficiency, long-term costs of ownership and maintenance, quality of light, and most importantly, the directional capabilities of lighting. In conclusion, the payback of this investment of this kind is quite attractive in the terms of energy savings, substantial long-term cost savings, and the quality of a presentation. And more importantly, and this is stressed more now than ever in professional and semi-professional stadiums, the lighting system by LED provides a much more impressive quality of experience, which is the key word at this point, for both the athletes and the students on the field, as well as the spectators in the stands, with a far less negative collateral effect to the neighboring homes and the respective tenants or residents. It is, to put it simply, a very smart investment, a very rewarding one, and a way to make the project the very best way it could be. A tremendous way to show what being a good and a respectful neighbor is all about. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members and city staff, thank you for allowing me time to speak to you tonight. You're going to be hugely surprised. I would like to talk to you about the CDM sports field. My name is Catherine Kendall. I am a decades-old resident of Newport Beach. I am also the parent of a CDM graduate who was a student athlete while she was at CDM. I am also a member of NCRG. I think that we've all been surprised at this process and the amount of paperwork and the amount of gigabytes it has consumed. I want to thank the city for their participation, for their responses to the various EIRs. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about my concerns, and excuse me for reading, because there are so many issues, I had to kind of condense it. The staff has not fully explored all the potential options for this project, nor have they provided the NMUSD Board of Trustees with adequate information to make a fully-informed decision. I firmly believe that the best decision will consider the needs of CDM student athletes and their families, the entire CDM student body and their families, the surrounding neighbors, the density of the present CDM campus, the topography and density of the surrounding area, neighboring environmentally sensitive areas, and all discernible future impacts of this proposed project. The recirculated draft environmental impact report appears to have some critical errors and omissions, as well as some vague and broad concepts. I hope all of these will be corrected, bless you, in a new revision. Nevertheless, these concerns highlight the need for a formal use agreement, and I would like to, Mr. Rubino spoke to some understandings he had with the school district, but none of those are in writing and none of those are in the current redrafted ERI or recirculated EIR. So I really think that we do need a formal use agreement, and that is where I am asking the city to participate. Here are some things that are missing. It would be great to be able to have a sound system which can be verified compliant with the city of Newport Beach noise ordinances, which we cannot do with portable sound systems. We also need to have reasonable curfews. If lights are incorporated in the final plan, we need defined curfews with the surrounding area, and we need to address the potential impact to the surrounding environment. We need a calendar of proposed non-CDM use of the facility to be agreed upon by the city with sensitivity to the surrounding neighborhoods and considering environmental impacts, defined responsibilities for any impacts of the surrounding area due to increased traffic, parking issues, noise, litter, et cetera. I support the two-field concept. Please turn out the lights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Mara Quist, and I'm a member of Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth. Oh, I forgot my introduction. Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, Mayor Pro Tem Duffield, honorable council members and city staff. Before I get to my designated remarks, I want to say we appreciate your comments, Mr. Pieter. We understand you are not the deciding body, it's the school board, but the City of Newport Beach Community Development Department is a responsible agency for this project because minor site development review approval is required for proposed lighting of sports facilities within a residential zoning district or closer than 200 feet to the boundary of a residential zoning district. So the city does have a say, it's a minor say, but it is a say. And currently, the proposed project is inconsistent with City of Newport Beach general plan policies pertaining to compatible development, form and environment, and ambient lighting. And that's what I want to talk about, is the ambient lighting, because we believe an error exists in the Corona Del Mar Sports Field Project Recirculated Draft EIR. We believe that district staff is misclassifying the residential neighborhood where CDM Middle and High School is located. They're using lighting zone three, LZ3, described as moderately high ambient lighting zone. This category typically includes the following: commercial corridors, high-intensity suburban commercial areas, industrial uses, shipping and railyards with high nighttime activity, high-use recreational and playing fields, regional shopping malls, car dealers, gas stations, other nighttime active exterior retail areas. One city planner summarized LZ3 as "a large city's business district." We believe the correct standard for the project site is not LZ3, but LZ2, described as moderate ambient lighting zone. LZ2 areas typically include multifamily residential uses, schools, churches, commercial and/or business areas with evening activities embedded in predominantly residential areas, neighborhood-serving recreational and playing fields, mixed-use development with a predominance of residential uses. LZ3, in turn, has been summarized as befitting high-density or mixed-use residential districts. With these definitions, we see that the area housing the CDM campus is better classified as LZ2. This matters because by calling the area LZ3, district staff are modeling brighter sports field lights than are appropriate for the existing environmental setting. By overstating the potential project site's current ambient lighting levels, district staff are understating the project's potential light and glare impacts. In other words, when the revised draft EIR concludes that the lights will have no significant adverse effects, this is because the draft EIR is assuming the lights are going into a high-intensity commercial corridor and not a heavily residential area. The LZ2's designation would allow district staff to model appropriate sports field lights given the existing environmental setting and conditions. We believe that district staff need to accurately classify the project site so that the CEQA analyses are comprehensive and accurate. In conclusion, the City of Newport Beach also recommended the LZ2 classification in its responses to both the first draft EIR and the recirculated one. We appreciate the city's continued interest in an accurate and complete CEQA process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Andy Lind, Newport Citizens from Responsible Growth. Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, and honorable council members and city staff. A lot of talk tonight about lights at CDM. We've tried to understand the lights at CDM. We've been active for the last four years, talking to all of the people at the school board and attending every single meeting for four years. How tall is 80-foot? How tall is that relative to our world? Well, I did a little research, and I thought I'd kind of help you understand how tall 80-feet really is. 80-feet is twice as tall as a brachiosaurus, the largest animal to ever walk the face of the earth, twice as tall. Number two, 80-feet is 50-feet taller than the existing pool lights, which are already acknowledged as a problem, 50-feet taller. 80-feet is three times the height of the lights that light our streets. 80-feet is half the height of Niagara Falls in the middle of a residential area. 80-feet is more than half the height of the landmark Chicago Water Tower at 148-feet. 80-feet is 30-feet taller than the famous Hollywood sign, 30-feet taller than the Hollywood sign. 80-feet is half the height of the Arc de Triomphe with none of the charm. 80-feet is the same height as the legendary Christmas tree at Fashion Island. Imagine that in your backyard. 80-feet is about 10 stories high. It's the height two times, 2.5 times, the height of any house in Newport Beach. And 80-feet is the proposed height of the lights that are going in across the street from us. It's not just one pole, one light, it is eight poles, each with 12 to 14 luminaries, not LEDs. They will be visible from the other side of the Bay, Dover Shores, and PCH. Every night, 115,000 square feet of land will be lit. The issue is really the air between the light and the ground. That adds up to 9,216,000 cubic feet of light added to our neighborhood. That's what they're proposing, 9,216,000 cubic feet. They refer to it as "the erection of eight light poles would not necessarily result in significant degradation of aesthetic value." Really? It's a significant amount of light and glare, and it will without question have a significant negative impact on our quiet residential community. Please build the track and field, turn out the lights, they create more problems than they solve. Oh, and how big is 9,216,000 cubic feet of light? Well, it's 32 and a half times the size of the Orca tank at SeaWorld.
Mr. Griffin, I got bad news for you. It's still not your item.
My name is Charles Griffin, East Bluff. And I want to talk about non-agenda item. Can I do that?
Yes, you may.
All right. East Bluff, lights. I've raised my children, my grandchildren, in East Bluff. I've been in East Bluff since before it was a jamboree boy scout camp. I know we've raised our families there without lights. You don't need lights. Please don't put the lights. That's not what I, end of sentence. But now I want to talk about noise, noise from airplanes. As I told you earlier, I developed airplanes. There's no need for those airplanes with the globe positioning. They no longer need to fly over the city of Newport Beach. The airlines don't have to waste their money in crew costs, gasoline costs, insurance costs, time of flying. When they want to go east and north, why are they going out over the ocean? They don't have to. They can take off and follow the freeway. So I want you to follow that simple statement right now. They can do it. I've designed airplanes forever. My grandfather developed airplanes forever, DC-3, DC-4, DC-5, DC-6. I did the DC-7, the DC-8, the DC-9, the DC-10, the MD-80, the C-17, and 21B2 stealth bombers. You don't need to take off and fly over Newport Beach.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none. Oral reports on city council committee activities. Just a quick line here, Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Pieter? Ms. Dixon? Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Duffield?
None.
None as well. Current business. Is there any requests from the dais for a staff report on this item? I have seen...
I do have to recuse myself because of real property interest.
Thank you. While he excuses himself, any public comments on this item? Mr. Griffin, it's a seawall. This is the Balboa Island seawall cap?
Oh, yes, okay.
The reason you're here.
One reason I'm here. I told you my other reason. The sea cap. Okay. I've had a home on Balboa Island, my parents, my aunts and uncles, since 1930. And the reason we need a sea cap is that the oceans are rising because of global warming, melting the glaciers in Alaska, and Canada, and Greenland, and the South Pole, because of burning of coal and oil in the last 100 years. We need a new source of energy. And source of energy is the fusion of hydrogen and boron. Paul Allen is building a reactor in Lake Forest. High-alpha energy, which will fuse hydrogen and boron, produce electrical power directly without heating steam. Please expedite that development. Also, another, Paul Allen, no, Paul Allen, that's Paul Allen, another group in New Jersey, Middlesex, New Jersey. The Focus Fusion, the Middlesex Astrophysics Organization is developing a boron-hydrogen reactor, nuclear reactor, which uses hydrogen and boron with a spark plug this size. The reactor is about the size of a normal transformer in a local substation. Those reactors can be installed there, and every city will provide power for our city that's clean, doesn't produce any radioactive waste. The product of combustion is helium. The hydrogen and boron form carbon, which breaks up into three helium ions, which accelerates the speed of light. Go to focusfusion.org, 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 focusfusion.org. Spend an hour or two at that website, because we're not only, not only is our country in Bob Gates, put money in the stimulus act under President Obama, build a reactor for submarines based on hydrogen and boron. So you need to know about this, focusfusion.org.
Thank you. I see Jim looking at you with admiration, because you may have spoken more times than he has. Jim, you have any comments? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the dais. Do you have any comments from the dais on this item? Is there a motion? A motion by Councilman O'Neill, seconded by Councilwoman Dixon. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
I don't know, Mr. Vagovitch really wants to give a staff report. We're going in the back room, help yourself. We're going in the back room, help yourself.
Councilman Herman coming out. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions to reconsider? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Actually, before you adjourn, we have to go to closed session before you adjourn because you have to come back out.
We have to report back out after that as well?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, thank you. So we are in recess for a second closed session this evening.
It stopped. Recording stopped. Okay, go ahead.
And just to recap for the public, that's to consider item 4C, which is the real property
We're going to convene the regular council meeting. Mr. Hart, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. Do I need to do formally anything else regarding most considered or anything else? All right, okay, we are adjourned.